Good evening and welcome to this, the March 14th meeting of the Livermore City Council. By the way, this is International Pie Day and it is also Albert Einstein's birthday, hence the Einstein tie. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all of the members are present and accounted for. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now on to proclamations and presentations. First off, we have the confirmation of our advisory body appointments and also administration of the oath of office. I need a motion to accept the nominations. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Warner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I would ask that Susan Lewis and Christopher Maines for the Beautification Committee please come up and for Human Services Commission, Eric Hahn, Marty Sutton, and Stacy Swanson. If you all please come up for the oath of office. And Richard Knowles, sorry, you're on page two. Mr. Knowles, thank you. For the Livermore Housing Authority.
I am very proud of this. It's all in this square. That I will support the defense, Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, or any offense.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Among which I will not enter.
Among which I will not enter.
Thank you so much.
And I'd like to thank all of you for offering and volunteering your time and talent to serve this wonderful community. That's one of the reasons why this community is as great as it is, is that we have people like you that are willing to step up and donate your time and your talent to make it better. So thank you very much, one and all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation proclaiming the American Red Cross Month, March 2016. We have Varsha Clare in the audience to accept this, and I'd like to read this to recognize the contributions that the American Red Cross makes to not only this community but to the nation and the world as well. Whereas, "The American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank the everyday heroes who reach out and help people in need, and whereas since inception, the American Red Cross has touched many lives in the local community as well as across the country and around the world. American Red Cross heroes in Livermore work tirelessly to help in times of disaster, give life-saving blood, provide support to members of the military and their families, teach safety preparedness classes, and donate their time, money, and services. And whereas in the past year, the 3,800 volunteers in the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter helped 968 families with temporary housing, clothing, food, and mental health counseling during 387 local disasters." Wow. In addition, these local volunteers trained more than 49,000 people in life-saving CPR, first aid, and water safety education. And whereas, Red Cross blood services support 40 Bay Area hospitals, providing with more than 100,000 units of red cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need, and Red Cross staff deploy with the U.S. Military to provide emergency communications, counseling, financial assistance, and a caring presence to over 600 local military families. And whereas this month is dedicated to all who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims March 2016 as American Red Cross Month and thanks those residents who volunteer their time, give blood, and donate money to make a difference in the lives of others." And I'll present this to Varsha Clare at the Red Cross.
My name is Varsha Clare and I represent the American Red Cross Leadership Council for Alameda County. And this is Kelly Morris. She is a disaster services volunteer, Livermore High School student, so.
Granada.
Granada, so.
Go Matt.
It definitely, it shows the humanity and organization that Red Cross is. It's driven by the volunteers and this community. And this community brings this volunteer time, money, donate blood, and I think it's life-saving for the services that American Red Cross provides, for people who are in disaster and are impacted by disasters, or empowers people and families to prepare for and prevent and respond to emergencies, and it's all done because of the support from cities and community and the city staff. So we greatly appreciate your declaration of proclamation. Since 1943, every year marches, since it was President Roosevelt did that, and for every year marches is declared as American Red Cross Month, to just bring the awareness and thank the community and the volunteers who help serve the purpose and help the community. So we thank you for all your help and we really, really appreciate it. And then Kelly, add a few comments?
Yeah, I got my start at the Red Cross at Granada High School here in Livermore, and ever since I've gotten more involved, you know, I see so many volunteers. Livermore High School is a very active Red Cross club, and just so many youth are out there helping, and it's great to see the connection between our city and our youth and the Red Cross, so.
So in addition to the disaster services, Red Cross provides support to the armed services, blood services, and specifically youth. There is a summer youth camp that is very, very useful for development of the future volunteers and just the leaders in the community. And you have a perfect example right here, so you ought to be very proud of your student here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for volunteering for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The City Council can neither deliberate nor take action or anything during the Citizens Forum. We ask that you keep the comments to three minutes or less. I have two cards, John Stein and Don Meeker.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I'd like to applaud the leadership of the Council in directing staff to study the impacts of the development around the Isabel Station on the scenic corridor. This is a fairly massive project, about 4,000 housing units and 10,000 office jobs. I think, you know, the scenic corridor is a unique part of Livermore's character and image. Being able to see vineyards and fields and cows and horses makes us unique in the Bay Area compared to places like Milpitas and Dublin and Santa Clara. The sweeping views are a vital part of the character and DNA of the city. I would like you to also look at the impacts. Right now, the offices are designed to provide a sound wall between the freeway and the residential units. But if the residential units are built first, what are the guidelines for Caltrans as far as sound walls? Could we end up with a major sound wall along the north side of the freeway? Also, it might be interesting to look at a plan that does conform to the existing scenic corridor. How many units could be built versus the current plan of 4,000 in a more attractive Finally, I'd like to say that I believe that Councilman Gary's idea of putting the issue to a vote is worthwhile. At this point, the project is not fully funded, and we don't know when or if it will be. I mean, there's gas tax reductions, there's a whole list of projects that BART has, the state is spending money on ferries and high-speed rail, and the federal government seems to be looking at budget reduction over infrastructure. So it may be best case is 10 years, it may be considerably longer. The other questions are, how will the project work? Can you add 4,000 units with very limited additional municipal infrastructure? And how will the people feel about, you know, essentially a more dense urban environment being grafted onto the fringes of Livermore? So I do believe while the MTC wants to provide workforce housing for the South Bay and San Francisco, Livermore should be allowed to vote. I mean, the public should have a voice in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Don Meeker?
Don Meeker, 2589 College Avenue. Good evening. We should have known it was Einstein's birthday. I have an Einstein tie.
Beat you to it.
Oh, well. July 12th, 1915, Chief Engineer George Beck appeared before the board and requested that the large fire bell at the town hall be removed to some other part of town, believing that it would be heard more distinctly by the members of the fire department. The matter was referred to the Fire and Water Department Committee. March 6th, 1916, removal of the town fire bell. Mr. George Beck, Chief Engineer, the Livermore Fire Department appeared before the board and requested the removal of the town fire bell to some more central location in the town. Mr. Beck complained that the members of the fire department could not hear the bell in case of fire alarm. The chief engineer was instructed to consult Mr. E.W. Deonbryne of the Pacific Gas and Electric Company to see what could be done to install an electric siren and make a report to the board at the next meeting. July 3rd, 1916, the chief presented a proposition from the American La Frank Fire Engine Company to install an electric fire siren in the town for the sum of $412.50. July 10th, 1916, appointment of chief engineer. A communication was received from the Livermore Fire Department recommending Mr. George Beck for a reappointment as chief engineer for the ensuing term. The department recommended the installation of a siren fire alarm. The communication also stated that the fire department had attended 12 fires, total loss of $3,626, covered by insurance to the amount of $1,250 for the year ending June 30th, 1916. On motion of Trustee Wilson, seconded by Trustee Heron, Mr. George Beck was appointed chief engineer for the Livermore Fire Department for the ensuing term by unanimous vote of the board. August 4th, 1919, on motion of Trustee Reeves, seconded by Trustee Hanson, and by vote of the board, the clerk, with the assistance of the Fire and Water Committee, was directed to write to the W.S. Darlene Company, Chicago, Illinois, accepting the company's proposition to send the town a sterling electric siren on trial for use as a fire alarm, the cost to be $390, including freight. In the Livermore Herald, December 13th, 1919, the fire department tests new electric siren fire alarm. It took them five years, four years? And I must say that the complaints about the bell not being heard by the volunteers went as far back as 1887.
Thank you, Mr. Meeker. Okay, that concludes the Citizens Forum, moving on to the consent calendar. Do any of the councilmembers wish to pull any of the items for common or discussion? I have no cards. These are typically passed with a single motion, being of a routine nature. Do I have a motion to pass the consent calendar?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Councilmember Turner.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Spodolsky. Any discussion on the motion? Any opposition? The motion passes unanimously. Onto public hearings. This is a hearing to consider the formation of a Community Facilities District, 2016-1 for the Sage Project. Ms. Lung has the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and members of the City Council. Council is being asked to consider the formation of a Community Facilities District, number 2016-1. The district is being formed to authorize the City of Livermore to fund landscaping, stormwater improvements, and other amenities identified in the Community Facilities District report, as one, park services, to other services and property owner association maintain improvements on public property services. This funding mechanism was chosen by Shay Holmes to meet their condition of approval for track maps, 8121 and 8216. Shay Holmes is a 474-unit residential development with four commercial parcels. The maximum annual tax rate is approximately $294,000 per year, and $51,000 of this amount is included to secure the property owner association maintain improvements on public property services, which will not be assessed unless the city determines that the homeowners' association does not adequately maintain them. On February 18th, City Council accepted the petitions from the property owners requesting initiation of the formation of the Community Facilities District and initiated it. A public hearing was scheduled for tonight. On March 1st, the ballot was sent out to the property owner and was due tonight at 7:00 PM. And so tonight, the City Council is being asked to, one, conduct the public hearing and consider written and oral protests, two, adopt the resolution of formation of Community Facilities District, 2016-1, and adopt a resolution calling a special landowner election for CFD, 2016-1, and then direct the city clerk to complete the landowner election. The fourth will be adopting a resolution declaring the results of the special landowners election. And if the election is successful by a two-thirds vote, direct the recording of the notice of special tax lien and introduce the ordinance levying special taxes within the CFD. So following these actions recommended for you tonight, the clerk will record a notice of special tax lien within 15 days, and the ordinances will go into effect 30 days after the date of final passage, which is anticipated to be March 28th of this month. August 10th is the date this year, the deadline for to file special taxes with Alameda County. So you have the recommendations before you, and staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. I have no cards, okay. Well, in that case, I will close the public hearing. Let's see, first off, there's a staff recommendation to adopt a resolution of formation of the CFD. Do I have a motion?
To move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Gary, seconded by Councilmember Warner. Any discussion on the motion? Any opposition to the motion? The motion passes unanimously. Next, to adopt a resolution calling for a special landowner election for CFD, 2016-1, and to direct the city clerk to conduct the election. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Warner.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Gary. Any opposition to the motion? Passed unanimously. If the city clerk will count the ballots.
One.
We need a short recess, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll take a short recess.
Do we have a representative from Shay Properties here in the audience?
Is there a representative from Shay Properties in the audience tonight? Shall we move on ahead to 6.01? Okay, let's move to, we will, shall we hold this item and conduct the matters for consideration?
Please.
Okay, okay, what we're going to do is we're going to hold this item while the staff meet and confer. Moving on to 6.01, which is Discussion and Direction Regarding Design Concepts for a New Civic Center Meeting Hall, project number 2004-39. Sherry Sheets and Mr. Cavallari.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. In May of 2014, staff presented a feasibility study prepared by Dogarty and Dogarty Architects exploring the possibility of converting the former main library to a new civic center meeting hall versus building a new meeting hall. Council provided staff with a direction to demolish the former main library and develop a site plan to construct a new civic center meeting hall at the former library site. At the June 2015 Council Budget Workshop, the Council approved a budget of approximately $6 million for a new civic center meeting hall at the former library site. Council also directed staff to complete the design of the new civic center meeting hall. Tonight, we will be presenting two conceptual design options for your consideration. Each option has approximately 6,500 square feet with 122 seats and additional meeting rooms. One concept utilizes architectural components of the existing civic center facade, which specifically includes the city hall, police facility, and civic center library. And the second concept proposes a more modern-style architecture. Staff is seeking council direction on selection of a site plan, building, architecture, and floor plan concept. Staff also is requesting council authorization to proceed with entering into an agreement with Dogarty and Dogarty Architects to complete final design on the selected conceptual design. Once the conceptual design is selected, staff will work with the architect to further develop the building architecture. The plan will then be brought for the planning commission and then back to council for final approval. With that said, I'd like to introduce project architect Brian Dogarty of Dogarty and Dogarty Architects to give you a brief presentation on the two conceptual designs.
Is the best of it just doing for this?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. Is it on? First of all, I want to tell you how absolutely thrilled we are to be here this evening. This is a watershed moment in this project. I also want to introduce Lance Kutz from my office, who is sitting behind me because Lance has done most of the work on this presentation. So I get to take all the credit and he does all the work. But we'll briefly go through this, and we are looking for your guidance and your input as we go along. Part of what we looked at in the examination of the new facility is to get the essence of what is Livermore, the materials, the existing facilities, the community, and so on, and to reflect those in the new facility. So we went through a number of studies, and some of the images we have in front of you are from both your civic center as well as surrounding communities, as well as just general materials to get a sense of warmth, of texture, to make it an open, inviting place. When we looked at the existing site, after it was determined that we would look for a replacement for the existing library, we looked first and foremost at something that would preserve all the mature trees. We had a number of existing features on the site, artwork, plaques, et cetera. We wanted to preserve those and to incorporate those. And we realized that by building in the footprint of the existing library that we would have an opportunity to really maximize the utilization of space with the least amount of disruption. So we set about planning how to move forward, and we looked initially at three different locations where we could potentially build the facility. Site zero is out on the north end of the site, and then we looked at sites one and two within the existing footprint. We found that zero is named zero because we determined fairly quickly that it probably wasn't worth further consideration. So we really zeroed in on sites one and two to look at for further study because it really disrupted, they disrupted the least, the existing trees and topography on the site. And here you have sites one and two, and you see the footprint goes in behind there of the existing building, so you can get a sense of where these buildings sit. And there are just a few things to note as we look at this. Concept one focuses really on an entry that connects very strongly to the existing civic center to the south. You can see there's an axis that comes in from that direction. It's set back a bit from, from South Livermore, and, but they're both designed to preserve that existing parking lot that comes off from behind the existing building on Pacific Avenue, and also to orient the, again, within that existing footprint, highlighting that the orientation of the two facilities, and as we go through this, this is where we'd really like your input on preference, is the distinguishing feature between the two different concepts. So let's focus on concept number one. This concept has its primary orientation, as I mentioned, towards the existing civic center. It is set back a little bit further from South Livermore Avenue, so it's a bit more sequestered within the existing park-like setting. The dry creek that you see that wraps around to the west and to the, to the north of the facility is part of our mitigation plan for onsite stormwater treatment, and it also forms a landscape feature for the site. Concept two has a much stronger orientation to South Livermore. The building is intended to reach out and have a bit more civic presence. It provides us the opportunity to actually reach with the gathering space that brings you in from South Livermore, and then creates a little bit more secluded space for an outdoor terrace that can be utilized as part of the meeting facility that is to the east. So as you look at these two, these are kind of the primary organizing features that we'd love your input on as we move forward and look at the different, different concepts along with the architecture we've developed. So here we have the two concepts side by side, and you can see that, as mentioned, one has this really strong relationship to, to the civic center to the south. The axis comes in, the primary entry is to the south. There's an entry patio adjacent to that, we're looking at the, the concept on the left. And there's a, there's an arm that reaches out to South Livermore, but we have a fair amount of landscape in between. So the idea is that it's a bit more secluded, a bit more nestled in the trees. Again, it's on that existing footprint of the existing library, so all the mature trees are preserved. But the, the strength of this concept is really that orientation to the south. Concept two, this is one where we wanted to provide something, again, that has more of a civic presence as you go down South Livermore. It opens up to the west. As you drive by, you'll have a chance, as you're coming from the center of town and heading towards the civic center, to get more of a sense of the building itself. The front door faces towards South Livermore, and then as we wind through that, there's the patio on the back that forms a secondary front door, if you will, to the civic center and provides that sort of patio space. So really keep those two in mind because we want to definitely hear your, your preferences as we move forward on that. We've done a little comparison of the existing space that we're in here, your much beloved civic center complex, city hall complex, council meeting space. And you can see the, the spaces on the left that are currently within this structure, and then the new spaces on the right and the amount of additional space that we will acquire. The, the space for meeting, the city council meeting space itself, which is really a multipurpose meeting space, will increase significantly the seating. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we look at the layout. But we also provide a lot of support facilities for this to be utilized as a space nearly round the clock for. round the clock for support of civic center functions. You can see the overall building is a little bit more than twice as big as the existing building, and it has a lot of great sort of flexible use spaces as we go through. There we go. We've included this to just look at sort of the typical city council chambers' use. This facility is envisioned to be utilized by a whole number of activities that are taking place within the civic center complex now. So we'll have an opportunity for council meetings, the historic preservation, the Planning Commission meetings, LSA Oversight, Arts Commission, Human Services Commission, Youth Commission, and so on. There are a number of administrative and training functions that will take place within the facility, and as well as an opportunity for meetings with the community, such as block captains, neighborhood group meetings, and items related to city projects. These functions are shown in green. We estimate that about 80% of the time available for that facility will be utilized in that facility. So already, it's, you know, if you build it, they will come. But at the same time, what it does is it frees up all sorts of space within the civic center that can be used for activities that are currently lacking adequate meeting space. So it'll really enhance the operation of the overall civic center and really speak strongly to the linkage between the activities in this building and the ongoing activities in the rest of the civic center complex. So let's look a little bit more at the, a little bit of the detail of concept number one. If you notice in this one, this is the one that links a little bit more strongly to the south, set back a little bit further from South Livermore Avenue. You see a little diagram in the lower left-hand side of the slide showing the orientation on the site. We developed a concept for this one that is a rather orthogonal orientation for the council meeting space itself. It's a little bit more formal in its organization. In this one, you enter from the pre-function space or lobby space, which is the light-green space in the center, on the same level as the main level of the council meeting space. There are meeting rooms to the east, which are flexible meeting spaces, not only function on their own, but can act as overflow space during heavily attended council meetings. They have folding walls in between them, and they open up to that lobby pre-function space as well. So there's an opportunity to get a lot of good flexible use out of that. You'll notice the council meeting space in the northwest part of the building, in the lower left, with its own restrooms, and then we have a number of support functions. There's a little, although it's poached in tan, it's the quote-unquote "green room," where for a presentation, we've labeled it "workroom." People can go in there and prepare for presentations to the council, and then utility, as well as AV tech space, and lots of good storage, and improved restroom facilities. In each of these concepts, we have fixed seating, and it is also seating that is on risers. So the actual function of the space will be much more conducive to the meetings and will still provide you with a good deal of flexible use within the building. On concept number two, this is the one, if you recall, which is oriented a bit more towards south Livermore. Part of what you'll notice in this one is with our entry facing in that direction, we have the building basically embracing you as you come in to that entry. It's a little bit more sheltered, and you come into the space that flows through the center of the building. We've looked at a little bit different type of organization for the meeting space itself in that we have a sort of curved amphitheater-like seating. Again, it is sloped. In this case, what we've done is we've brought you in on the same level to the back of the seating area as the lobby, and then the floor area steps and slopes down to the main floor in front of the dais for the council meetings. That places that lower portion down just a bit and maintains those same good sightlines. And what it allows us to do is to lower the profile of the overall building a bit because we've actually gone a little bit below the adjacent grade. It also gives you a little bit different experience. Part of what we want your response on is whether you have a preference for the more orthogonal sort of seating plan or one that is a little bit more amphitheater in shape. In both cases, we've improved sightlines, so there's actually the permanent raised seating. And in both cases, we have lots of good flexible support space. So again, you can see on the right to the south, the meeting spaces that have the folding walls in between. And in this case, the open outdoor gathering space is to the upper part. So you'd flow through this space from south Livermore to the east side of the building, and there'd be an outdoor space that would be available to both the council meeting space as well as the meeting rooms one and two, which would act as a sort of hub between the civic center and the new building. I should also mention in this plan that we do have circulation, even though it's raised, circulation behind the back row of seats in both concepts. A part of what we looked at in great deal is just sort of how do you flow through the space when council meetings are taking place? Do you have an opportunity to not disrupt things if you need to go in and out during the meeting? And we, you know, we'll have more opportunity to keep working on that as we go through, but those are all important considerations. So as we look at the two side by side, you'll notice, again, that concept one, the public entrance faces towards the existing city hall, more closely ties to the existing buildings. The plan is a little bit more traditional and orthogonal, uses more traditional materials, and we'll see in a moment visually what these buildings may look like. Concept two, there are two public entrances, one tied to the city hall, the other one with a strong link to South Livermore Avenue. We do, which you haven't really seen yet, but we do have in each of these, an idea for passive cooling within the building. We are looking to be as energy and resource efficient as we can. So there's really a better opportunity for that because of the orientation in concept number two. And you notice that sort of open U-shaped element that's adjacent to the restrooms in that concept. That is our little cooling tower. And there's a bit higher level of transparency at both building entries, and you'll see how that carries through into the elevations in just a moment. So here we are with a section through concept one. Gives you a little bit, really, a sense of the volume of the space, as well as the fact that you're entering into that lobby element, which is in the center of this slide. And you can see that we've raised up the seating so that the primary portion of the floor in front of the dais is at the same level as the lobby. So you're sort of moving along on both sides of the raised portion as you come in, and then you sort of circulate back up to the seating spaces. This allows for, you know, rooms with fairly dynamic volumes. You know, they can really optimize the passive cooling, and it provides a good circulation behind the last row of seats, you know, to, as I always mentioned, access in and out during all the activities. Here we are in concept number two. And in this one, as I mentioned, you were coming in, the back row is at the level of the lobby space. So if you look at the section, you can see how we now slope down to the area in front of the dais. So it's a slightly different concept. In this one, because of that, we have a ramp that comes along the east side of the space that accesses the workroom, as well as the AV room, as well as the council meeting space. And it, you know, as I mentioned, allows us to go a little bit lower profile. You can see on the left-hand side of the section where the ground plane is, so we're about 18 inches below that. So it's just a different way of looking at the same concept. It does allow us a little bit lower profile in the building. And as mentioned, because of the orientation, allows us to probably optimize passive cooling just a little bit better. And here's that little section to demonstrate that passive cooling concept. Excuse me, where we will be drawing air through that cooling tower, have an opportunity to provide through some thermal mass and some moisture control, really helping to reduce the impact of having to cool the building through much of the year. So hopefully that results in not only being more energy-conscious, but actually a lower operating cost for the building. We're designing the building to lead silver, so, which is part of the city's plans for all their new buildings. And as we said, all the volumes in the space, including the operable windows up high and the cooling tower, are intended to really take advantage of those times when we have some nice breezes flowing through this part of Livermore. As we look at the building in elevation, we've taken two different approaches to the elevation concepts. Here's what we've developed for concept number one. We'll call this perhaps a bit more traditional approach to the look. This was borrowing fairly heavily from the forms of the existing civic center. So we have some sloping hip roofs with roofing materials that are very much the same as the existing roofing materials in much of the civic center. We're using stone, plaster, and glass. We have clear-story windows that form a band that is, it gives us a good, strong base and then an element to really carry the roof above. Here you can see, this is really the view of the civic center, of the building from the civic center. That's what you'd be seeing on the upper elevation. So this is as if you're walking from the civic center to the north, through the existing green area to the building. That's your front door. And then the elevation from south Livermore, this would be set back, as you remember, fairly far from south Livermore. So in front of this would be a pretty expansive greenscape as a foreground to the building. And here we have the other two sides of the building. On the east, so this is towards Pacific Avenue, and then on the north, this is sort of feeding out into the outdoor space as you pass through the building and into the green space where Pacific Avenue and south Livermore come together. We've prepared a little, couple of little conceptual looks at the building. So this is what the building would conceptually look like as you walk over from the civic center towards the front door of the building on the south side. And you can see some of the existing landscape elements and the mature trees that we've worked very hard to maintain on the site. And this is what the building might look like as you come up from south Livermore. So again, nice elevations, you know, good use of stone and glass, some transparency even from this side. You see in the background, the raised meeting halls, city council space, and then you're sort of wandering along the south side toward, sort of facing towards the civic center as you walk by. Concept number two, we've taken a bit different approach. And again, this is, we'd love your feedback on preferences and what feels good to you and what you, what, to give us direction as we move forward. This is perhaps a bit more contemporary look to the building, just different volumes, different way of handling the roofs. In this case, on the bottom, you see the elevation that, of what you would see approaching the building from south Livermore. This is then the front door to this building. We have sort of a secondary front door, as we mentioned, on the east side into the exterior plaza. But in this case, the element on the right are the meeting spaces. They kind of reach out, and some of the restrooms, they kind of reach out to wrap around an entry courtyard. We have a bit glassier entry to the building, so we've, a little bit less use of stone. We've got more use of wood in this case, and some masonry as it wraps around the building. And then you can see the council meeting space on the left on the lower elevation with some sun shading to take care of some of the west-facing glass. So again, we feel this, you know, perhaps a little bit more contemporary look to it. The tower, as you see, which has the clock on it, is our cooling tower and helps us with passive cooling for the building. So the other two elevations on the building, so in this case, on the east, this is where we flow from the entry on the other side that comes off of south Livermore, out through the building and into the courtyard on the east side of the building, which in this case forms the hub between the civic center and the building itself. And then the north elevation, which is facing towards the side that, where the intersection of Pacific Avenue and south Livermore. So, you know, both buildings, I think, present a really attractive opportunity in terms of proportions, materials, being responsive to the environment, but they're obviously both different. So we'd love some feedback from you on preferences and directions and just sort of, kind of your visceral reaction to those. This is what concept number two would look like conceptually from south Livermore. As you come in, you're, we mentioned, being sort of embraced by the building with the council meeting space on the left. Yeah, I think the strongest thing about this particular concept is its presence on south Livermore. I think that's a fundamental question you may want to ask is, we had the thought as we went through the design of this, that there's a certain philosophical statement about being there, being part of the public, being out there in front of everybody. But it still gives you some seclusion for the council meeting space. But, you know, we feel perhaps it's a little bit more of a gesture to the surrounding And here we are on the side as you come up from the civic center. And again, we have this sort of outdoor courtyard space. You see on the left, the other end of the lobby, sort of pre-function space as it comes out to that space. And as we're going through the design of this and working with staff, we're constantly looking at the way that this building would function and support the activities that you would envision for the city, whether it's having a gathering in celebration of something, whether it be, you know, sort of a little break time from having ongoing work sessions inside there or whatever. But a great opportunity to really open up and take advantage of the beautiful park-like setting that you have for this building. And just a little side-by-side comparison for the two concepts. Again, up at the, concept number one at the top, a little bit more traditional, sloping roofs, stone, a little bit, you know, lower, basically more punched windows. And then on the bottom, you see the bit more contemporary approach to it. Again, warm materials, but the warmth is primarily through the wood that we've introduced. And then the flat roof lines are varied to reflect the different volumes within the space for the different uses. And you see the other sides of the building again. On the top, you get the east side and the north side, so those are perhaps the two more secluded views of that building, as well as the east. In this case, the east side, I think in concept number two, is a bit more activated because of its orientation, relationship to the civic center, and then the north view of concept number two. And side-by-side renderings of those. So we're excited with both of them. I always have a rule in our office, never show your clients something you wouldn't love to work on in the future. So we're in love with both of them. We've looked at the budget, and we've worked hard to ensure that we are on budget. I think we had identified a maximum for the project, including soft costs of approximately $6 million, and we are just a shade under that. And we have vetted that pretty extensively. Of course, we have an estimator we're working with, and we'll continue to vet that as we go through to make sure we stay on target. And in terms of next steps, did you want to talk about that, Mike?
Sure. It's all yours.
Thanks. So tonight, staff is asking council's direction on selection of the site plan, building architecture, and the floor plan concept. Staff is also seeking authorization to enter into an agreement for final design with Dogarty and Dogarty, based on whatever concept you choose. Authorization for construction will be subject to a separate council action. After council has reviewed additional information on the asset management program. Although the overall asset management program has not been completed, the age and core use of this facility is likely to result in it being high on the list of replacement priorities. This concludes staff's and our consultant's presentation, and we're available for comments.
Okay, questions at this point? Okay, well, if you have questions, let's go for the questions first, and then we'll have the public hearing and then open up for comments.
Okay. So question, so the anticipated parking would be on the northwest corner, I would assume?
So, I'm sorry. So the parking, in addition to the existing parking lot that's there, parking will be a part of the overall civic center complex. So part of it will be in the lot behind... So part of it will be in the lot behind City Hall, part of it will be in the lot in front of City Hall. And there will be some on-street parking, but it's well within the total available parking.
So the reason I ask, so where would you anticipate the majority of people parking? In the, on the northwest corner? Or, and if it's going to be the civic center, are we going to have more parking than we have now? And the reason for my question is distance, first off, how the building is going to appear from the parking? And secondly, distance from parking slot to door, because it looks a little lengthy for people that are handicapped.
Right. And that's one of the reasons we preserve the existing parking lot is to make it, that would be the priority parking for disabled. And we do have this kind of layout to give you, orient you towards where all of the different existing parking lots are that would feed this facility.
So from lot one, it looked like concept two didn't have a door that would serve that parking lot? Just, just a thought, that, that we're going to have people parking there and we should potentially make sure that they can get into the building readily, easily from there?
Great. Good comment.
Okay. And then, again, from the, when you're looking at the either concept and you're looking at the stairs, is it safe to assume that one side of the room's a ramp and one side stairs?
Right. In fact, we were looking at the possibility that the whole thing may be simply sloped.
Okay.
But absolutely, everything will be ADA accessible.
Okay, so wheelchair can get anywhere in that room?
Yes, definitely.
When we use the overflow room, can the council see into the overflow room? Is the wall behind the council chambers movable or no?
The way we've designed it right now, the back wall of the council chambers is not. However, we're working with an AV consultant, and if one of the desires is to have some sort of linkage, there could be a video feed or something else that links those spaces.
So possibly the people in the overflow can see into the chamber and we can see that potentially?
We definitely plan on the folks in those meeting spaces being able to see the council chambers activities. If you want that to go the other direction as well, we can certainly look into that.
That's all my questions right now. If comments, I'll save for later.
Okay. Commissioner Spodolski?
Sure, just a couple of questions. The current EOC, it's located in the police department. Is that the, the police department conference room?
Yes.
Okay, and that's 800 square feet for an EOC?
That's the number we have.
Is that?
Yes.
I'm assuming that's a little small.
There is, we do overflow in the PIO offices in another location within the police department, but it definitely is small and very crowded and not the most efficient way to run an EOC.
And to expand that EOC, we would be going out into the parking lot, probably don't have the, the space, or it probably, would it be cost-efficient to expand the current EOC? I'm seeing shaking heads, no.
Not very effectively with your, with your given building layout. That, that would, it would be easier to create, either create a new space or to transform another space, just because of the building configuration there in the police department.
And pardon me for acronyming already, or throwing out an acronym. It's Emergency Operations Center in case of a disaster. And as I understand it, the technology needed for, or recommended for, an EOC is constantly changing and upgrades are needed. Do we have the current ability to install some of the necessary upgrades in that 800 square foot room?
So we certainly have the ability to do some replacement of that, but you cannot change the fact that the room is, is too small. So right now, as your city engineer noted, we divide those two functions into adjacent areas, which is certainly workable, not ideal. We'd love to have a larger space there. Ultimately, this facility, if you decided to move forward with it, provides both a larger EOC room, it then has the immediate adjacent hallway area, which can basically work very effectively for the informal meetings. Of course, one of the main things you do in an EOC is you trade information. The EOC room itself gets very noisy. You like to kick people out of that. So you have an adjacent area immediately adjacent to that that will function very well. And of course, the rest of this building has a variety of conference rooms or meeting rooms in it. So from that perspective, it'll actually function very effectively.
If I could add, the technology enhancements in the new council chambers would already be installed to meet the requirements for the meeting space in the council chambers.
And could you also envision using the council chamber itself for some EOC function? Or does that format just doesn't lend itself to an EOC? Could it be incorporated so we make sure we're maximizing the space?
Yeah, absolutely. More than likely as serving the Public Information Officer function and anything that has to do with contact with the, with the public during the event.
And so my, I guess I can safely assume then that this building is being designed to standards that's acceptable to FEMA for an EOC, so we can apply for future grant funding if we needed to replace equipment, make changes, that, that sort of thing?
Correct. It's designed as a central facility building.
Okay. The other question that I had, and I think I'll save the, the other comments. The cost per square foot for the base building is $460 per square foot. Is that, could you give me some type of range as to where we're falling in under for construction of a, of a building? I mean, I, you know, you could tell me 460 square feet and, okay, I don't know. Is that typical? Is that on the higher end, lower end? What's the base level that we can get a building for?
Well, we just finished construction of our new fire station number nine, and we opened bids about a year ago. It came in about $430 a square foot, to kind of get you an idea. And it was approximately the same square footage as well, so.
Okay. And we don't know what the, so it's based on maybe the construction cost index for San Francisco Bay Area, which is probably around 2% or 3%. So, okay. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor Gary?
From the PowerPoint now and the question, which I really appreciated on the EOC. The 800 square feet, is it in the current programming before us? Or was it, is the 800 square feet to be added?
Okay, the 800 square feet that we're referring to is the existing EOC over at the police department. This facility incorporates the two meeting rooms, program, can be programmed for EOC, which is 1,800 square feet. So that's programmed, and then there's also the council chambers area that could be used.
I just want to clear up where.
Yeah, that's in, that's in.
Good. The other question I had was, the height was a little taller than I expected, both over the spaces as well as the central hall. Is that only due to the attempt to pass a cooling, or was there a need for the raised ceiling spaces and other things that isn't obvious from this, this brief and overview?
The, it's an interesting question. Obviously, these are still concepts, and we haven't refined the engineering on them. There are a number of things that were driving the, the height of some of the spaces. Quite frankly, one of them is the AV-desired infrastructure for the council meeting space itself. You know, how large should the screens be? You want to have them up at a certain height above the dais and so on. I would suspect as we go through refining the design, and we look at the, you know, balancing that with the budget, that we're going to be looking very carefully at the appropriate height of all the buildings. So we may find these buildings coming down a little bit. The height does assist us with the passive cooling. There's no question about that. We have an opportunity to get some clear story windows up high and get the air flowing through those spaces. And so, but that is something that as we go through it, I'm sure we'll look at on a more refined basis and get to that sweet spot where it's just the right height.
Oh, I have some comments on that, but I'll hold those for later. Thank you.
Okay. That's our winner? Okay. The, both of these concepts have what looks to be a tower. And so are both of those towers capable of passive cooling? That's, that's the intent. We, just working with our mechanical engineer, he felt that the orientation in concept two was better in terms of its orientation of the prevailing breezes and its relationship with the interior spaces. But yes, the intent is that both of them have a tower that would provide some passive cooling. Okay, yeah, because it only mentioned the two, the tower cooling under concept two, and it wasn't clear if it was, is that? It should have mentioned for both of them, yes. Okay, terrific. And.
So, John, it depends on how much hot air we anticipate coming out of the.
A lot.
That's going to be an essential part of cooling the building out.
We'll just put the tower right in the council, in the middle of it, right? Okay. We'll put a hot air balloon on top. Okay, that's the question that I've got. Any other questions before we move on to the public hearing? Okay. Got probably 10 cards here. Okay, let's go with, and I'll ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Shannon McGrail, John Stein, and Jean Schuler.
I'm here on behalf of.
Oh, you can go up to the podium. Yeah. Hold your mic so everybody can hear you.
All right. I am Shannon McGrail, and I'm here on behalf of Jim McGrail. We believe that wineries are the engine behind tourism in Livermore. The absence of a significant hotel has long been recognized as the stumbling block to making us a more attractive travel destination. For the growth of Livermore Valley's wine industry, we count on being able to bring in tourists as Napa and Paso Robles do. Please spend Livermore's investment dollars on building our town as a remarkable visitor destination.
Great, thank you. John Stein, Jean Schuler, Lynn Sepola.
John Stein, 1334 Kathy Court. Of the two options, I like option one. The orientation, perhaps that could be rotated so it's closer to and facing Livermore Avenue. I think it is an iconic building, and while most of the buildings are set back, this would be a, a sort of a keynote. The other thing is, we should learn from the previous library and other buildings that have been public buildings, don't build a flat roof. The library leaked almost from the day it was built. The, it got worse when the trees went up and we got leaves in the fall and they plugged up all the drains. So even if it's one in five or so, I mean, don't build a flat roof on either of the options. The seating arrangement, I believe staff should be perpendicular to both the public and the council so they can see them. I'm not sure what that curved linear design would, would work. It would be nice to have some sort of a small food preparation area. There are dinners for the council, there are luncheons, there are meetings that go on all day. So perhaps a small food preparation area would be worthwhile. The, I sort of like the idea of stone or, or some sort of an easy-to-maintain exterior, also something that's vandal-resistant. I don't know if you remember what somebody did to the Peace Monument, but it's a fairly isolated landscaped area, and there are problems with vandalism and security as well. So entrances are nice, but too many entrances are dangerous. Finally, funding. It's unclear where the funding will come from. We have the borrowing power, because I think we're retiring some of the loans for the San Francisco outlets, but those were paid by essentially sales tax money that was diverted. What is the funding source for this? We have a lot of unmet retirement benefits and unmet maintenance, deferred maintenance. So I was wondering what the source of funding will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Jean Schuler, Lynn Sepola, Sandra Graffith.
Good afternoon. My, my name is Jean Schuler. I've been a resident of Livermore for 48 years and a Livermore Lab employee for 44 years. So I've been given the honor to read two letters for Bill Goldstein. I think one of them was previously read from July of 2015. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members, as you know, Lawrence Livermore National Security, a limited liability company that manages LL&amp;L Lab for the U.S. Department of Energy, employs 6,000 people working to solve some of the nation's most critical problems in national security. Almost half that workforce resides here in Livermore. We frequently rely on many amenities provided within the city as well as surrounding communities to conduct business. With more than 1,000 high-level visitors each year, we look for the city's fine restaurants and hospitality offerings to accommodate our guests. In addition, we must routinely seek suitable gathering space along with sufficient lodging for many collaborative activities we conduct each year for thousands of participants. Today, the laboratory must reach beyond the boundaries of Livermore to secure this space. LL&amp;S supports the city's effort to explore the construction of a quality hotel and conference center in the heart of the downtown area. Whether in San Francisco, the East Bay, or Silicon Valley, competition for adequate conference rooms and lodging space is fierce. With the right price point, availability of parking, and proximity to quality restaurants and entertainment venues, a conference lodging facility that would easily handle to 200 to 500 guests would not only complement the city's already competitive list of offerings, it would be a benefit to LL&amp;L for a host of activities and its visitors as well as its employees. And then he also wrote a letter, Dr. Goldstein wrote a letter February of this year. Lawrence Livermore National Lab applies forefront science and technology to solve the nation's most pressing problems in national security. To this end, we rely on attracting, attracting and retaining a world-class workforce and ability to reach out and convene scientists and engineers from around the world. Having the Tri-Valley region as our home and being able to offer its exceptional amenities and our key ingredients in our success. It is for this reason that we are pleased to observe the thoughtful and measured development of the downtown Livermore area. We have advocated in past proposals for the development of a hotel and conference center in Livermore and reiterate our support here. The addition of such a center would enhance our ability to host visitors and events. And subject to considerations of cost and scale, we would be open to discussing the establishment of laboratory presence there and would, that would enhance our ability to educate the community about our exciting work and contributions to the nation. That's from our director of our laboratory. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Sepola, Sandra Graffith, and Dave McQuiggin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Lynn Sepola. As Livermore Cultural Arts Council President, I recently read a statement from LCAC unanimously supporting cultural facilities in the downtown area. As a private citizen, I note that the city of Livermore crafted, crafted a downtown-specific plan in 2004, a product of a lengthy process involving many workshop. This plan has successfully guided the city in making the downtown area very attractive. The plan has a suggested place for the council, the new council chambers. In Chapter Three, Downtown Revitalization Strategy, the document states, downtown should be the cornerstone of the community. It is a place where its residents meet each other. It should be a center for all Livermore. Amenities are found here that are unavailable elsewhere. Unique shops, public transportation, public and cultural facilities. The document lists 12 key points to achieve these goals. Number one, promote the concentration of activity generating uses in a compact cluster in the center of downtown. Number two, promote the development of an arts and cultural components. And finally, number 12, and not least, take every, take every opportunity to concentrate civics and quasi-public buildings in the downtown. So once, it listens further, we should consider the possibility of locating new city facilities, such as the city council chambers in the heart of downtown. We should also locate other quasi-civic facilities downtown, such as facilities for the production of arts. And finally, support the development of downtown hotel to serve as a public use that can accommodate tourists and people on business, two areas which will grow. The city needs to carefully consider the citizens' recommendation for the new facilities as outlined in this downtown-specific plan. The council chambers, along with an upscale hotel and cultural facilities, should be a key contributor to the continued revitalization of the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sepola. Sandra Graffith, Dave McQuiggin, and Jean King.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand. City Council members and city staff, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sandra Graffith, and I live at 1317 Fairbrook Court. I am, like others who have spoken already, a very strong supporter of the downtown hotel conference center and parking structure in our superblock area. Coming from the hotel business, I know a well-branded hotel will be an excellent, long-lasting, and generous friend to our whole community. I'm also supportive of this project on the city center meeting hall, but I'm concerned that this $6 million project is going to take our eye off the ball and take the emphasis away from what should be our top priority, the downtown hotel. away from what should be our top priority, the downtown hotel and conference center and meeting structure. I think $6,000 would go a long way to developing the right kind of relationship to make the hotel project happen. So therefore, I sincerely wish, respectfully ask, that you keep the hotel project, conference center project, in center stage and your top priority. In doing so, you will best serve the many constituents of your local and regional folks and keep Livermore that very special place that we all love to live, work, and visit. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave McQuiggin, Jean King, and Bill Dunlop.
Hi, Dave McQuiggin, Ontario Drive. Actually, I like kind of both of them, but I'd kind of like to do a little bit of a little bit of A and a little bit of B because I think that would go a little bit better. Elevation-wise, let's make it kind of match the buildings that we got. You can do that with any of them, but it should match the same style. I really don't think a different wood facade or anything is going to be the right thing. But I'd almost like to take Building 2 and put it back into Building 1's spot. I just kind of like to flow through it. I like the stadium a little bit better. I don't know about that, but where the person is actually talking to the council, they're a little bit more centrally located, at least in that footprint. So that's kind of what I'd like to see. Just get it back off of South Livermore. I think if we're going to go driving down to the wineries, we don't really want to have a building that close. I think we want to keep that perspective leaving town to be kind of open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McQuiggin. Jean King, William Dunlop, and finally Denise Ledden.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Staff. Jeff Caskey, a member of our Livermore Community Group, was not able to attend this evening, but asked that I read this statement regarding the proposal. The city is initiating a very major project in the downtown as well as engaging on a BART project at Isabel, and these require Livermore to invest significant attention as well as capital. A modern council chamber is appropriate for a town the size and quality of Livermore. But as we look at the most productive use of resources, there is $14 million to be paid for the affordable housing funds used to purchase our downtown site. A truly enjoyable downtown requires creative parking solutions, starting with approximately $17 million to replace parking displaced by the new downtown center. And we are learning that to attract a quality hotel with the capacity and style Livermore wants in the center of our downtown, that is more impressive than a residence inn, will likely require additional support for parking and/or land. Considering our best return on investment, these should be considered as best places to invest funds today because our downtown development will quickly bring added value and revenue to our town. Using some of that revenue in the future for a modern council chamber can be the city's reward for a job well done. End of his statement. Okay, I was on the steering committee on the general plan review in 2003, along with John Marchand, and the downtown specific plan said at the time that you really want your center part of your community down there. And they said it would have been really nice if the library and the civic buildings were down there, but they'd already been built, but they highly recommended having, if you had a city council chamber, to bring it downtown because that's where the downtown wants to be. So I think what the wineries and the lab and everything are saying, why don't, we really want a conference center, we want a hotel, why don't we combine those with the city council chambers and put them downtown? And so, one of the things, so now I'm going to go back to your thing here, which I want downtown, but I'm going to tell you my thoughts about this. I don't like flat roofs. I agree with everybody, I just don't like flat roofs. The parking, when I come to the library at night for a meeting or for some reason, there is no parking in the parking lot that's there. You end up parking on the street. So if you're really going to put something out here with the city council, with everything that goes on the library, which is absolutely wonderful and everybody's there, you need more parking. And I guess that's all I have to say. Anyway, I want it, I would really like it downtown with everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. William Dunlop and Denise Ledden.
Mayor and City Council, Bill Dunlop, only been at Livermore 44 years, so I can't keep up with most of the people around here. I want to talk a little bit about the lab needs for the hotel and conference center. And you've heard the general statements by the director of the lab. I work with people who actually organize the meetings and conferences that are held. And at the laboratory, there's basically one person in each of the major directorates who actually ends up doing conferences and making arrangements and so on. So there are probably five or six of these people who do this kind of work. The one I work with is for global security, and so I had a good talk with her, and she basically says, "It's got to be more than 200-room hotel, and it's got to have room for both meetings and poster sessions because that's what the kind of conferences the lab does." So that takes more than what we're talking about in terms of the hotels we've been discussing, and it means that we need to accommodate more people and staying in the hotels, so we need kind of rooms that would accommodate 200 people. We need the floor space where you can have the meetings, which will be perhaps even more than 200, as well as a place to do multiple sessions together. And so the demand at the lab, you know, you can just hear the statement of the director, but I think it's useful to know that the people who are actually organizing these are providing the input that says, "We need this larger size to accommodate what the labs need." Thank you very much.
Mr. Dunlop, quick question. How many of these types of events do you typically put on?
Well, I provided you earlier the statement that showed the number in a particular year of various size conferences. Those were taken out of, actually, 2014 if I remember correctly. And so for that, there were—
The over 200?
Yes, there were 200 or so.
The over 200 numbers.
Right. So that did not include all of them. Those were the ones that the director's office basically was aware of. Some of the conferences we do are done for DOE here at Livermore, and those don't necessarily show up in that list. And so we do, you know, that was probably the minimum number of conferences that you would have because there are, every day I go into the lab, there's a conference going on somewhere.
In excess of 200 people?
Some of them are at the lab where you need meeting, well, you need hotel space for the ones, and then some of them are held away from the lab where you need both the meeting space and the hotel space for the conferences. So there's a reasonable demand that comes from the lab, and we haven't talked about Sandia, which is approximately an additional 10% based on the fact that that's the size of their organization relative to Livermore.
Again, my question is, is how many of these events that you're talking about would require more than 200 hotel rooms?
I will, if you would like, I will go research that number and pull it back out because I did not bring it memorized.
Okay, okay.
And so I can provide that for you in the next page.
Great, thank you. Okay, Denise Ledden.
Good evening. I'm Denise Ledden. I'm president of the Livermore Amador Symphony. I'm also a board member of Cantabala Children's Chorus and a member of Livermore Cultural Arts Council. I'm very interested in the cultural development of the downtown area. I and other performing groups are looking forward to having a variety of performances for the community in venues smaller and larger than the Bankhead. A flexible-sized conference meeting and especially performance facility near a hotel would help to enliven the downtown on weekends when conferences are not being held. The hotel would support attendees as well as performers. Please direct city resources to support the growth of the Livermore Downtown Arts District. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards that I've got, that's all of the comments. Moving on to, okay, comments from the council. Go with, okay, Councilmember Warner.
Okay, I'll get started on a few of the things. One of the things that we just had was a concept where we need meeting rooms everywhere, and I think we've got the, one of the slides in here showed how much the projected use would be by the city staff itself. What I haven't kind of got figured out here is if, if you look at that one slide, it shows quite, you know, is it Slide 10? It's occupied a lot by the city staff and the city government needs. So how does this work? We hear now that the lab and all these other places need conference facilities, but we're talking about during the work week. So it sounds to me like a collision. So I don't quite understand how, what takes precedence and how does this work? So that's just sort of a rhetorical question because, but we have to figure that out. But I don't fundamentally see how both needs can be accommodated by one facility. And then, second of all, I keep hearing about, well, the lab and Sandia, they need all of these facilities. They've got plenty of, you know, real estate, so I don't understand why these facilities aren't there and how much would be on the, you know, of these meetings and how many hotel rooms and all of that, but there's a difference between saying, "We've got a meeting going every day," and there's a meeting that would have to be in a public facility that's not secure and all of that. So I think what I've always come to on this thing is, I'd really like to see who's going to use the facility, for what purpose, how often. And so I'm seeing a fair amount of need from the city government point of view, and I don't understand how I work simultaneously with the private sector. And then the other thing that's factored into this is the EOC, which is extremely important. Hopefully, we don't have to use it very much, but I'm quite familiar in my day job, these things are very valuable to have, and you've got to have your act together there. So I think we need some real drill down on exactly what's happening here because I'm hearing a lot of competing needs, and I don't see how they all get simultaneously satisfied. So with that said, with respect to the particular questions and preferences, when I hear words like contemporary and modern, I'm thinking, "Well, that's how you got the doughnut wheel." And I like it, it's iconic and all of that.
Googie architecture.
But, so, right, so, yeah, so, I, you know, and I think about the, I think it was the Jack Tar Hotel in San Francisco with the plan. I mean, you get some really bad stuff that's contemporary, but it's not, you know, it's not lasting. So I personally see no reason to go for something that's quote "modern" because I don't know what year that is and how long that would stick around. So I, I'm absolutely for, if we put it, facility here, that we attach it to the complex, that it match, because I don't want to see a hodgepodge and say, "Oh, what were they thinking back in that year?" Right? So we've already got a bunch invested in the one architecture, so personally, I would stay there. And then the other thing that was, Mr. Stein mentioned it, but I, too, if you think about stone versus wood, I mean, start, lower maintenance. And then we, we talked about, you know, having to have the ventilation for all the hot air, and so we'll, I think we can figure that one out. I don't think we need the presence on South Livermore. I think in addition to the access and everything, I think having the parking lot use that for the, for the special needs case. But I'm also concerned about putting it too close to Livermore Avenue because that's not the safest place to be having everybody, and then they might be parking on the other side of the street, and it just doesn't make sense. So I think it should be, look like the rest of the complex, and it should be integrated closely there. So on that part. Then personally, I'm not into the formal council chambers and making it a special place. I'd rather have it less formal and more flexible, but I guess others will maybe decide on that. And then I also agree with the comment that the way we're set up here with the staff really has to see the audience and the council simultaneously, so this right angle, I think, is preferable, although I do like the arch with respect to the seating in the other case. So there's some deal there. I would also say with respect to the, you know, with the technology in here, that we really ought to focus on wireless, and that I do believe that the meeting space can be flexible because the council can have wireless connection to whatever we need to see. So I don't, I don't want to see the, say, "Well, we've got to have everything locked down because of, we've got to have wired connections." So I don't want to put that constraint in there. And then I think that's the initial, most of what I've got to say. And then I, just a minor thing on the budget, I think it's, it's kind of funny. I mean, I'm looking at the first soft cost, design fees, $575,008. I mean, I'm sure it's not $9, or something, but I mean, it's— We cut it back from $10. Right. Yeah. So the, it's a little funny, but also I think the soft costs include city permits. So it's like, are we, I mean, what is that? I mean, that's, we're paying ourselves or something?
You have a lot of permits which aren't us, so yes, they're collected at our process, but we are the collecting agency for all of your permits.
Right, so it's not just the city permits. It's all the other stuff.
The surface area.
Right. So I think that's about it. Less formal on the meeting space, more flexible is my preference so that it is more in general. And I really believe, personally, I believe that there is a need for the city staff to have a close-by facility, and if you think about it, we talk about Emergency Operations Center and the city staff, and, you know, I joke about it, but what, all of the staff needs that are there, are we really talking about busing them back and forth down Livermore Avenue downtown? I mean, we have to be practical here. There is the cost, frankly, of just the staff moving back and forth, and that's kind of a huge, I mean, we should factor that in. So that's all I have to say.
Vice Mayor Gary.
Given some of the input, a question of staff, if the city manager would, I didn't ask this before. In an earlier council meeting, we discussed the economics of doing several key simultaneous things, downtown BART, second parking garage downtown, et cetera, et cetera. Could you really just briefly restate the age of this facility, the history of the Civic Center complex, and three, the funding for this project and how funding for this project won't detract from the downtown garage and the other needs in our current five-year CIP?
You'll correct me if I leave something out. You gave me quite a list there, but I've got a couple there at the top. So we'll start just with, just a touch—
The history lesson and the age.
Touch of history here. So as the proud original project planner for this project, which was done now 28 years ago, and that person was much, very enthusiastic to have a large civic building be one of his first buildings that he got to do here as the council chambers. The concept at the time was that this building would last for three to five years. As we knew we had to ultimately come up with the council chambers, you'll, you may, some of you may recall that we actually had an off-site facility previously that actually was a courthouse during the day, and that only functioned as a meeting space for the council. We didn't have ultimately meeting facilities onsite here. In that 28 years, various councils over the period of time have prioritized this facility against other needs for the overall community. The library ultimately was completed for the Civic Center site. The police station was completed. The expansion of City Hall, as the city grew during that nearly 30-year period of time. Each of our fire stations have been renovated, and in fact, the last time the council considered these two projects, they made a very distinct preference to place the last of our fire stations in front of this project. In addition to that, we've had two recessions, a small one and a huge one. We've also had various considerations of placing the facility downtown. One of the concepts was that the council could ultimately borrow the Bankhead Theater from time to time and utilize that. But for the vast bulk of our meetings, the meeting size that we need is about 80 seats. We gusped up to just over 100 seats for about 10% of our items, and only about 1 in 20 meetings actually needs overflow. So although the overflow building that is built into this facility would be larger than what you have over at the multi-service center, it is an important facet of that. So your history lesson, as we've been at this several times, this is actually the third process we've gone through. Two previous councils ultimately did design work, preliminary design work, and those were either placed aside for economic reasons because we couldn't ultimately do that during a recession, or placed aside as we dealt with previous development downtown when the specific plan was done. Related to items as far as how this fits into financing, your existing capital improvement program has slated the replacement of the council chambers as one of the projects being worked on. You're aware that you've also identified significant dollars for downtown parking. Downtown parking ultimately was a council priority as we went through the development of these final projects as we move forward. So the parking garage for downtown and this particular facility are sharing proceeds from certificate of participations. The certificate of participation was originally issued to— participations. The certificate of participation was originally issued to deal with infrastructure needs with the El Charo area. The city ultimately became a, a actual participant in those pieces of infrastructure, because we wished to move them forward during the recession. And during that time, the standard financing was not available, as well as we were having a very large amount of infrastructure being placed out there relative to the land value before the buildings were actually built. Once the buildings were built for the outlet center and as each of the developments happen out in the specific plan area, the requirement of those projects is to pay those funds back to the city. So the great news is one fairly significant cost of a certificate of participation is the cost of issuance. That has been covered by our commercial partners here. How would this be paid for? So even though the, the rate is actually very, very attractive, about 3% today, it has a very slow escalation, so that by 2029, that is actually at 5%. But as a fixed rate with some very specific steps in it, that's a very attractive all-in rate, because there aren't any additional issuance costs there. One of the things that we evaluate from a staff perspective is what combination of debt and equity to use for a facility. This facility, if it was ultimately approved to move forward, would have some equity in it and would have some debt in it. From your staff's perspective, that's appropriate, because we are replacing an existing facility. So you do have some use by existing people who are here in the community, as well as a 50-year life of this facility. So it is appropriate that that be paid for out of revenues over time, especially if you have basically a fixed rate, which is going to be very competitive over that time. So hopefully, was that what you were looking for on both history and financing?
That's it. It's a common question at this point, and I'll state what I've said before. You're looking at the right economic intersection of, of ability and need. We got our money's worth out of 28 years of thinly built modulars. In regards to the fire stations, which of course I'm fond of, four out of the five city stations are new out of the ground, new out of the ground in the last 15 years. We have literally made this the last municipal facility through thick and thin. We've repaired our reserves. We're dealing with our unfended liabilities in a structural way. We have some cash in the bank and ability to borrow. It's not going to detract from our other civic eyes-on-the-ball issues. It's not big enough to be a regional conference center. We desperately need an appropriate EOC, and for all those reasons, we previously had voted to nudge this along to this point, and certainly tonight, I'm supportive of the next trigger pull to, to finish design development. In terms of aesthetic feedback, I would agree with Councilmember Turner so far. Several points. Well, briefly, John Stein did tug at me about making it center on South Livermore. My initial reaction coming into the meeting was, "No, it needs to be set back, more inclusive." We have a main entrance to Civic Center. Heck, I might even need a traffic light someday as the way South Livermore and College keep going. You ought to enter the Civic Center complex and be directed by appropriate signage, you know, to one of four major functional buildings, and certainly bring it closer to the parking for, for the handicapped access. Two, I mentioned the height and the solar tower. While I was a proponent of green and LED, I've also built LED, LED, lead fire stations, and I know what it does to cost per square foot. I kind of wanted a Chevy in this project. It's now looking like a upscale Buick. And if you come back later and say, "4% of the cost is just in the tower and passive cooling and, and unneeded raised ceiling heights," I'm kind of going to go, "Yeah." You know, is that the best use of the funds? Now, if you can do that for pennies in terms of value engineering and still get the meeting space sightline AV needs, the public hallway and even the outdoor spaces really struck me as very useful in temperate times of the year. So just my three cents' worth on going too far on energy passivity if you're, if you're digging a hole in the budget. And then in terms of architecture and aesthetics, I also agree with Concept One. I think on the raised council chambers, I really do like it. As much as we try to raise this in the day so we could see all the audience, we really don't. So I think to some degree, you can raise the sightlines and get us engaged in a conversation where we can see and be seen and be heard. It's just marvelous for the civic enterprise aspect of the room. But at the same time, if, if maybe some of those chairs or functional devices can be converted for EOC needs or for public information briefing needs, camera angles, so be it. So all that long-winded way of saying, thanks to staff. It's good work so far, and I think we need to make the next incremental jump while we're not in a recession and we have the finances to finally deal with this 28-year-old headache. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Okay, just a few comments and questions. First off, for clarity, City Manager Roberts, can we handle more than one project at a time as a city?
We've been doing that for quite a while. So the short answer is yes.
Not trying to be flippant here. Have you stopped working on the downtown?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Are we moving forward on the downtown hotel, meeting space within the hotel, and the residential in the downtown to complete our downtown?
You have directed that that happen? Your staff is hard at work at that.
Is this project slowing that down?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Does the meeting space in the down, so the meeting space in the downtown and the meeting space here are apples and oranges. I don't mean to be flippant or anything like that. We need civic meeting space. We need it close here, chief in the back. Imagine it's Friday night, and we have an EOC incident, and your headquarters is smack dab in the middle of the downtown. How many extra people might die, let alone be, not be able to get services because it's too impacted? We need a nice, easy-to-access location for that center, and this is the perfect spot. How many civic citizen dollars would be spent with staff having to go back and forth and back and forth instead of walking three minutes to this building? This building is not just city council. This building is a civic meeting space, and it needs to be a civic meeting space. Yes, our business partners want to have some meeting space in the downtown. So do we. We want to have weddings in the down, well, I can't, the wineries want to keep the weddings at the winery. But we want to have meeting spaces in the downtown. Absolutely. We have some excellent projects that are being built right now that are, that are just exciting and fascinating, and, and the hoteliers and the residential people are working really hard to give this community in the downtown what they want. Totally different, separate process. We need to talk about this space and what needs to happen here. And so that's what I'm going to do now. First off, and I thought to mention this to you earlier, South Livermore and Pacific, turning left is a nightmare already. We really shouldn't let people park on South Livermore there. So that was going to be my, matters to be initiated. So setting the building back, I think, is smart. I think it's going to make it even harder to navigate turning left on that street if we, if we have it close. I am absolutely in favor of option one for the location where it's at, and it really kind of completes the Civic Center feeling and this whole campus. Again, with a thought on, you know, absolutely making sure we're ADA compliant and really considering the distance from the bus stop and the parking lot to the building and making sure that we can have ready access. I love the tower, as long as it's not too, because I love the comments. I agree, agree. I love the idea of the tower. I love the clock on the tower. Kind of gives that old town clock tower. And as far as it goes modern and contemporary, this is Livermore. I want it to look like Livermore. I love how our downtown looks, and I love how this campus looks. So more of the same in this, in this area, just to make it blend in and to look nice would be fantastic. As green as possible, that makes sense with funding. And, and, I mean, I don't want to spend $100 per square feet to save $5 a year on, on power. So, I mean, we want to be smart about where we're spending our money. But there's some pieces of Concept Two that I really like. I like the interior of the council chambers better, and I like the wrapped piece with, especially for the audience, depending on where the screen's for them to see when you have people in straight lines. For instance, the folks over here, I'm assuming, found it a little difficult to see the screen today. But if we're more curved, depending on where the screen is, I think it would be a little bit easier for everybody in the audience to see. And perhaps curving staff, like if you curved council on one side and curved staff over here, we could kind of sort of see staff. But I think it's more important for the audience to see staff. So maybe if we're curved, curve, but flip the curve the opposite direction for the, for the city staff, that might work. I don't know. What were my other comments? I know you guys always say, "There's plenty of parking, plenty of parking, plenty of parking." Please make sure there's plenty of parking, because there's never plenty of parking. And, and, and I can't remember who said it. I think it was Gene Schuler who said, not, sorry, Gene King, wrong Gene, about the library parking. Yeah, that parking lot fills up at the same time that we're, there's business buildings here. So we certainly need to make sure that we have great parking here so that people, I mean, eventually we'll have a vibrant shopping center hopefully across the street. And if that street's busy, I don't want people crossing unsafely and crossing this way. So we really need to make sure we have good parking here and that it's safe. And what was the other piece? And just a nitpicky little piece on the interior design. I like the entrance to the bathroom as an easy escape. And in Plan One, it is, and in Plan Two, you have to go down there. So making it an easy escape, just in case we need to hide really quickly, because people are throwing things at us, that would be great. And, because sometimes I feel that that might happen. Thank God they don't bring tomatoes with them. There we go.
Just going to make that comment. You stole my escape comment.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Spadovski?
Sure. So what I'm hearing is we do have flexibility in terms of the architectural design and the layout. So with that said, I really, I do agree with the contemporary style, but I like Concept Two out of the two concepts. Through my professional career, I've had the pleasure of visiting many council chambers. I think I totaled up nine in Contra Costa County today when I was counting in all the, the council chambers in the Tri Valley. And I think the, the amphitheater-style seating works best, in particular when it is curved, and that we also need to make sure that people understand the riser concept, that it is not, I'm assuming, and looking for a head nod here, it is not similar to a movie theater where your knees are at the head level of the next person.
No.
It is just so you can see the head above the head in front of you. So it's not that dramatic of a rise. As I sit here now, I can't see Mr. Meeker. He could be disagreeing with me and shooting me daggers, but I can't, and I'm getting...
He is.
...pieces of the Swanson's there, as I could see. And that is part of the problem, because I, personally, I like to read the audience when we go through these comments in, in meetings. And most of the time, when I'm, I'm talking to residents and I say, "Well, where are you at the meeting?" That's my first question, because I can't tell. I can't, I can't see half the audience. The, half the audience can't, not that anybody would want to see me, but, you know, half the audience can't see the, the presentation. So I really do think that that amphitheater style, especially the curvature, really works. And I think Concept Two, in terms of the layout of the building, it's not just a shotgun straight, of course shotgun might be good for Livermore, but a straight shot down the hallway. It has that kind of angle to it, and it makes the building a bit more interesting. And in terms of where that can fit on the site, I would leave that up for the professionals to tell me on the next step. But I would prefer it, as was mentioned earlier, off of Livermore, South Livermore Avenue. I think tucked back in the corner would be, would be better. Other than that, you know, I did struggle with this item over the past few months. I do have a bit of an emotional attachment to this building as well. My, making the city manager cough there, but my, my first professional meeting as a transit planner for wheels was in this building. So my first tariff, first of many terrifying moments in this building, and it does, you know, hold a, a special place for me. It, you know, kind of, when I think Livermore Council, I do think this, this chamber. But at the same time, thinking about it, I'm recognizing that the cost to build a new facility will continue to rise. Buildings aren't getting cheaper. That's why I brought up earlier the CCI, the Construction Cost Index for San Francisco Bay Area. It's something that I follow on a yearly basis, and that, that can go anywhere between 1% to 3% to 4%, sometimes higher with the CCI. So we have to be aware of that. And at the same time, this building is aging, and we need either full replacement or additional maintenance, which is a cost on the other end. So by delaying or waiting even further, we're raising the price of a future building while dumping money into this building as well. If we were talking just specific council chambers only, I would agree that, yes, we could meet in the downtown, and we could probably meet at the Bankhead. I think the Bankhead for council chamber-only purposes would be a, a decent use. But as you add more items to the list of facility uses and the needs of the, not only the community, but city staff, it starts tipping it in that direction of, of making sure that we have all of our civic facilities in one location. And the EOC, I think, is the, the, the prime example. I would like to see staff develop the list a bit further. We can throw in there the Citizens Police Academy. That room that I mentioned over at the police facility, I believe that's the largest meeting room. And that's, I think, woefully undersized for our PD. I spent, how many weeks is it? 16 weeks in the Citizens Police Academy in that room. And the one criticism that, that I had of the, the academy at the time, and also the people that I attended the class with, was the, the meeting facility, the room, you're cramped. It's just not ideal. And if that's the largest area that we can come up with for city services such as a Citizens Police Academy, then I think we do need larger facilities. I will also leave with one comment, that I do have full confidence that our staff can handle the workload that we're throwing at them. And I also have full confidence that our city manager would give us the huge timeout symbol if we were throwing too much at city staff. I don't think it's a situation where this council, and I believe we're all fully aware of the, the workload, and we're willing to put in the work for these projects. We're attending special meetings. We're holding extra council meetings. When I mentioned it to some of the other council members in the Tri Valley, they're, they're like, "Wow, you guys like to meet a lot, don't you?" And I don't think this is a council that will shy away from extra meetings and doing what it takes to get these, these projects through, because there, there are a lot of projects, there are a lot of major things going on, and I think we hold them all equally important, and, and we believe that we can get it done and get it done right. So with that, Concept Two, contemporary style, with the amphitheater-style seating would be my vote.
Mr. Roberts, just a point of clarification. When you said that you designed this building, was it three, two, five years I was going to ask, or was it 35 years?
At the time, we thought, we really did believe the temporary part.
Three, two, five. Okay.
Yeah. And, and we rented it for a while. We were so confident. We, we finally bought it. And, and so, yes, it's, I mean, for, for the use it's gotten, it's lasted really well, and you, and you've been aware of its various challenges with roof leaks, HVAC, infestations of various things, strange animals dying underneath it. I mean, there have been some challenges over the years, but it has hung together, getting shot at.
Yes. We're resilient, if nothing else. Okay. There's been some, you know, talk about moving this, the site. I like the site, we, the, the way it lays on the, this particular site. How many, you've been to nine different council chambers. How many are on a different campus than the City Hall?
Ooh, good question. I don't believe I've been to one that was separate from a, a City Hall.
Yeah, because originally, this was going to be in the, in the City Hall, and then it got value engineered out. And then the idea is, we're going to move into the, the library, and that was, that was 20 years ago. And, okay, so best practice for just about everybody means that it's, it's on the same campus, because in case you forget your PowerPoint, you can run back to your desk and get it. You know, you don't have to get in your car and drive. Or if you're at the EOC, you don't have to jump, you know, find parking before you can get into the EOC. But I guess one of the things is, I have, here we have dedicated parking, and some folks, some of the city employees actually get to go home. Now, a lot of them still stay here because they love the council meetings. But that does free up a lot of parking. And so we're using it dual-purpose. Otherwise, if you've got a Wednesday night, and you're going to a, a meeting at the, at the meeting facility, you may have to fight people in the downtown and compete with people trying to use our businesses rather than going to the council meetings. So I think it's good to have the dedicated dual-purpose parking for employees in the daytime and for the community at night. So I like, I like that here as well. Again, we can multitask. We do it a lot. So I agree with the, that comment. I liked Councilmember Turner's point about the clock tower. The clock tower was in Concept Two, but not Concept One, but there's room on the tower for, in Concept One. I also like Concept One, the architecture. I like the peaked roof. I like the, the stone. Don't forget the anti-graffiti coating on the stone. Makes it a lot easier to get it off. I've tried different stuff, and it's, it's, get the coating on first. So that works. I do like the amphitheater-type seating, but not as, as steep as Dublin's. I don't mean you beat it on Dublin. Everybody always beats on Dublin.
That's what I was referring to.
But not as, yeah, not as, not as steep. On slide 13, a little bit, and then... But not as, yeah, not as, not as steep. On slide thirteen, a little bit, and then fourteen and fifteen. On slide fourteen, it appears that you can only enter the, the seating from the center aisle. It looks like the, there's some sort of block to prevent people from entering the, the seating from the aisleways on the sides. But it looks like all the, the, everything goes up the aisle way. And of course, as, as you pointed out, that means if people are leaving, then they have to walk in front of the council and in front of the audience. I talked about the, the little sketch on the, on the top right. Whereas on page, on slide fifteen, you actually show the steps going down along the sides and showing that you can access the seating from, from both the, the center aisle and the, the side aisles.
Yeah. If, if I could comment, that's an unfortunate part of that little 3D rendering. You, you actually have access to the side aisles in both plans.
Okay. Because I, I do like the, the configuration of the, the exit and egress and ingress from the, the center and from the two aisles. Because that way you just go straight up the back and out. I don't want to lose, you know, we're adding about 35 seats, I guess, compared from this council chambers, about 30 seats from this council chambers to the new one. I guess that staff has already worked out that's most of our meetings are somewhere between 100 and 120.
Yeah. Essentially, at that size, you'll basically have very few meetings where you'll need overflow. You do have, you know, there is a, there's a chunk of them that are just a hair too big for this room. You know, you can see people sort of standing or difficulty getting a seat. By adding that additional number of seats to your main hall, you'll actually have the vast, vast majority of meetings inside the main hall. With 80 additional seats, essentially, there's only one meeting that I can remember in my entire time here that would have required more seats than the main seat plus the overflow.
The Springtown Golf Course.
Um, Springtown Golf Course would, would be a close one because candidly, there were about 200 people for there and you'd be able to handle that. I was thinking of, of actually your airport where you had 900.
2005.
Yeah. At 900, you'd need another facility. And we have those in town for those very rare occasions when that's necessary.
Okay. So you can access both, from the aisle and also from the, the sides.
Yes. I should just point out that in the one concept where we're coming in with the, the back row being at the same level as the lobby, we actually have a center pair of doors, if you'll notice in one of the plans. So you can actually walk in and walk right down the center aisle. The other one where we've, you're coming in basically at the level in front of the dais.
Right. That was, that was Concept Two, shows you going right down the center aisle.
Right. So that's, that's the primary difference between those, in terms of access.
Yeah. I, I did like that, the fact that you've got three ways to get in and out of there. You sneak out, straight out the back without having to go up the aisles. And so you've got steps on the, the, the bottom aisle, as it were. And then you've got a ramp on the, the top aisle. I'm, I'm looking at Concept Two. And it's a ramp on the, on the top aisle. So
That's, that's the way we've currently shown that. But there, there's also the possibility, depending on how much elevation we want for the back row compared to the dais, to simply ramp all three aisles.
Okay. Okay. And let's see, the, again, I, I prefer the architecture, the external architecture of Concept One to match, I'm sorry, it's, you said that you love both your children. I've gotta pick out which, which one of your children I like better, you know. So I understand that's a, that, I know that kind of pains you a little bit, but that's, that's part of your job.
I, I'm glad, actually, that you're all expressing an opinion about that because the most difficult thing for an architect is for you to say, I don't know it, but I'll let you know when I see it. It's, I'd much rather hear we prefer one versus the other.
Okay. Well, so the, the external of the Concept One, I like that, that architecture. I do like the layout of the hall, the amphitheater size type seating, Concept Two. Although I also, it troubles me to see this, this curve where everybody's back is to the audience. I also like the fact that you've got staff being able to look to see if there are any missiles coming from the audience. And they can, you know, keep their eye. So I, I like having staff perpendicular to, to the dais. I think that, that works very well because then it helps to engage the, the, the audience for most of the presentation. You know, granted you guys have your back to the audience, but, but, but you're making the more concerted conversation with the, the council members.
Mayor, can I make a, a comment about that?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. You, you had your chance. No, go ahead. Yes, please.
Sorry. The, yeah, the, the council, if you go to the DSRSD, you have the DSRSD chambers, it's one, maybe look at that one large curve layout where you do have council and then staff and staff. I, I don't know. Maybe that's a way so we can kind of, it, she just drew the smiley.
The clerk is on the, on the left.
Right.
And then the staff is on the right.
I don't know how that would work out in, in terms of staff being able to communicate all the way down the table and pass notes and, you know, things like that. But yeah, so that, that might be an option. It's like a, a larger curve.
Dublin, again, Dublin has the, the dais, and then it goes into the, a curb with the, the staff.
Kind of like what's in the council, covering it. They have that square.
Right.
Also, the, the single entry lobby, I like the, the layout again on the site of Concept One. It's farther away from South Livermore Avenue. I'm going to the library since my kids were little, so that's the entrance to the building. You know, you walk past the, the peace monument. And I don't think there's a kid in Livermore that hasn't played on that. But, so I like that configuration. The, I refer to them as airlocks. I don't know what the actual term is, but you have double, double doors so that when they open the door, you don't get this wind tunnel effect that blows you through the, the doors as you come in. I don't know if you've considered something like that, where you've got two sets of doors, so when they come in, you don't create that wind tunnel effect. That make sense?
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that.
Okay, all right.
Or revolving.
I like revolving doors. Some people get, get claustrophobic in them. But again, recognizing that, as, as was pointed out, there's a tremendous amount of use for this building by the, the boards and the commissions. And this really is a community facility. And as, as much tremendous effort as our city manager put into this triple wide trailer, I think it really has, has seen its, 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 its use. And I, I hope you won't be too torn up when it, when it gets torn up, but.
I'd like to help.
We could have a raffle or something, you know, but.
Pieces of wood paneling we could sell as a fundraiser.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. So with that.
I've got one other.
Do you have, you got a vague sense of where the, the council's going on this?
Okay.
So, Councilmember Warner?
Mr. Stein brought up the food prep. And that seems like a, what's the thought? Should there be a need for food, especially in my familiar area with EOCs, when those kick in, you need it, and other meetings? So what's, is there any ability to accommodate that? Or what's the thinking? Where the, if there is food needed for some of these meetings, how is that handled? Because we haven't spoken to that yet.
Yeah, we can accommodate some of that in the, in the side room, similar to what, what you've got now, and expand that a little bit.
Yeah, a little meeting area.
Provide you with some options on that.
But it'll, but it'll have the, the appliances and everything?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
And part of that is that, you know, for a full EOC, you know, you'd like lockers and showers and other things. And we want to be very clear, we're using those facilities on the Civic Center campus. Your main administration building has showers and lockers on it. And of course, the police building has a much more extensive set of showers and lockers on it. So we do expect in those instances, the facility to be on a 24-hour-a-day schedule and for some staff to be here, you know, over a long 12-hour shift, the ability to both feed them and, and provide them ability to rest and to provide other needs. One of the other reasons that this campus works is we have those facilities on campus and don't have to recreate them.
Including the full kitchen?
Yes. You have several full kitchens on site. You know, both downstairs, you have two partial ki, three partial kitchens and one full kitchen in your City Hall. And you also have facilities in your police building as well.
Okay, so.
Honorable Mayor, if I could, in other words, I just wanted to summarize the, the general architectural direction. We got some very specific questions and comments, which staff will chase down. We'll sort of take a look at those. But my understanding of the majority of the council direction is that the building location be to Concept One, essentially located further from South Livermore Avenue. The architectural style matched the complex of buildings with some very specific comments about adjustments to that. And that the meeting hall interior arrangement looked more like Concept Two, with again, some variations on a theme. You want us to take a look at some options there. We had individual comments on clocks and building heights and wired versus wireless facilities. And there was an additional items having to do with making sure when we're done, both that, that whoever is sitting at the dais, the decision makers have good sightlines out to the audience, vice versa. The audience has good sightlines back to the decision makers. That staff can, in particular, see the audience as we are laid out there so that we, so that they can see us as well as we are presenting. That perhaps a portion of the staff table, like it does now, for people who are presenting directly to the decision makers, might be configured as it is. But we'll sort of take a look at a variety of different options on that. Were those, the major areas of consensus with some other ones that we still need to check out the details of?
And I think all of us agree that you guys will figure out the, the presentation space, all of the, the audiovisual stuff. I know at ACTC, we've got two screens, one on either side of the dais, and there's actually one that goes upright into the ceiling for the council to look at. So there's a variety of different techniques, but just not this.
Right. As, as part of this whole process, we have in our team an AV specialist who has done a number of council chambers. So that'll be part of that. And the, the dialogue on what we want the ultimate function to be will be a strong part of the process.
And by separating essentially the screens that the council will have from the screens that the audience need to relate to, you solve one of the major challenges of this room, which is the best place to put a screen, of course, would be behind you. But this room's nine feet tall. So that don't work. So that is one of the things that basically allows a screen to be up higher on the wall, allows everybody to both watch you and to watch what's being presented on the screen, your screens that are in front of you. So it basically allows you to watch the audiovisual and have a second screen if you need to basically follow the meeting, as well as any of the decision makers who would use that facility. As you noted, we have, you know, about 10 different groups that from time to time use the building there. If that is generally capturing the direction we have, now we need a motion on the business item, which is actually whether you wish to move forward with design drawings.
Okay. Any other, they pretty much got the, the concept here from everybody's perspective?
Just if, one iteration further on this screen stuff. Again, if you make it wireless, then anyone in the audience can bring their, their own screen, maybe like an airline or something.
Pick up the Wi-Fi.
And as long as we're in the weeds on that, I was gonna chase you down outside. I present in, in my career, I, I've probably been in over 100, 150 council facilities and county chambers in the states. The big screen, high wall, ceiling mount thing has a major drawback for presenters, public and professionals. And that is you can no longer use a pointer on one screen to illustrate a chunk of, of something. So a home run would be if the AV company can create an electronic input device that when the, the moving pointer shows, it's on council member screens. If we're looking into a set screen, it's on audience screens. Anybody at the podium, when an exhibit comes up, can say, over here in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see blah, blah, blah. You just can't do that with modern laser pointers on plasma or LCDs. They disappear. They don't work.
Right.
And they're disconnected from each other. Thanks.
Okay. Very good. So with that, do you have a motion to, so you have sufficient direction and then a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement to move ahead with the final design?
Can I say one other thing before we go there?
Go for it.
Okay. This is just the design. And I just, I'll just reiterate, and I believe that you have said in the past, that before we actually make a decision to, to build it, we'll have, at that point, we'll have better information on our deferred maintenance and our budget picture and everything else. But this is simply with respect to the expending the money for the design, but not the construction. And we will have additional information at that time.
You are correct. This is for the design. It is not for construction. The item will return to council. That is both in your staff report and in the resolution. It is quite clear that we need to return to council for further authorization prior to proceeding and that, that the council's been clear that they wanted more complete information on at least where we are with our overall asset management program prior to making a decision to move forward.
So you're accepting the design and the site. So with that, do you have a motion?
I move that we move forward.
All second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Very good. Thank you. Now we're gonna bump back to 5.01.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think that this time it would be appropriate to ask the city clerk to tally the va, the vote and the ballot. And then I'll talk about what the next steps are.
Mayor and council, the ballot cast is invalid as it was not signed. Therefore, there are no results for this election.
Wow. Okay.
Therefore, so having lived through Florida, things tend to happen every so often. There is a way through this force, though. The applicant would have to submit a new petition. There is adequate time right now to bring that back to you and have your, this proceeding, sometime in mid-May, actually have that final action taken in time to place it on the tax roll in early August.
Okay. Always pay to, to read the directions, right? Okay.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Dave Best with Shay Holmes, please forgive the attire.
You recall that the last possible.
Yeah, I was, I was at the dog park when Pam called me and said, you didn't sign the ballot, Mr. Best. So I apologize for that. This CFD seems to be somewhat cursed. This is the second time around here. So, but I represent the property owner. There's only one property owner in this CFD, and both the property owner and the city are interested in getting it formed. So we'll get it straight. And I apologize to city staff for, for the mistake. Thank you.
Okay. Go back and walk the dog then. Okay. Well, thank you for coming out and, and straightening that out. Appreciate it, Mr. Best. Okay. So with that, we're going to move on to, we have a, a report from, from LV PAC. The presentation review, the 2015 annual report. Mr. Kennison?
Hello?
It's all good news, isn't it?
Um, yes. Yes. Great news. Mayor, city council and city staff, I am very pleased to be here to talk to you about, does this light work? No. Of course not. Is, is there a light? I'm not completely blind, but just slightly. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that wonderful report.
Last year, I spoke to you about the position of Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center, that, the position that we were in and the vision we had for the future. And I will do the same tonight, but this time, I will be speaking from experience and not from just a mere two months on the job. And not my impression after three months on the job. That will be more interesting, I think. I will also share some statistics throughout. For instance, the Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center employs 58 staff, 11 full-time. 14 local artists have workspace in the downtown art studios. And we had 13 sold-out performances last year at the Bankhead Theater. The great news is, last year, thank you. The great, the great news is that last year, we had a budget, we had a, or this year, this past year, we had a, a budget surplus. When we started out, when I started in December, a budget had been approved that showed a loss of almost $300,000 or $298,041, to be exact. Not eight dollars, but $41. We set out with a goal to reduce that number by as much as we possibly could. I have to say that I never imagined that we would have gotten to a surplus, but we did. And I thank mostly the community for the support that they gave us. We achieved a minor miracle at the end of the year with a surplus of almost $20,000. That may not seem, seem like much to many people, but it was huge for us. Combining terrific attendance at LV PAC Presents Performance with generous donations was the magic that made this possible. I can only say that it is great to be loved. If you look at the chart, you can see the blue lines are what we were budgeted and the red are where we ended up. The Bankhead, of course, was the, the big winner and carried the rest of it. The Film Festival, which is projected, we had some expenses last year and no income. And that's all coming in this year, which is and that's all coming in this year, which is great. So the way that we're loved is we now have 824 members, up from 677 in January of last year. So we have 157 new members since last year. We got just 44 new members last year on one day, on December 1st, when it was Giving Tuesday, when we actually made our goal and got over our budget loss. We have a 68% average occupancy rate at the Bankhead Theater. We have 11,800 volunteer hours served by 156 volunteers, 75 hours average per volunteer, just to show you how much we are loved. And I'd just like to take a moment, since we had the surplus, if I can have the mayor come down here, I'd like to give you the check to pay off the loan from the city. It was already cashed, but I want to have a photo op.
Take it.
Showing that we actually paid off the city. We also paid off all of our.
I'd like to have a question to clap.
We also paid off all of our existing debt, so.
Here's a check. I have to meet the.
I didn't sign it.
You can hang it up in the seat.
That's contagious.
98 cents?
Yes.
Try putting that in the ATM.
So we're really pleased that that happened. So last year, I also talked about using the lobby as a visitor center. You may or may not remember that. And I had asked for support to make the, to turn the lobby into a visitor center at the time, but we didn't get that support last year from the city, which was fine. And I said that I would move ahead in any case, which we did. Our architects worked out to map a refined use of the lobby so that we could turn the lobby into a visitor center. They did some plans, and after going out to bid for construction, we found out that was too much, so we put that on hold. Hopefully, at some point, we will do it. But at this point, we have opened up as a visitor center. We placed a desk in the lobby. We have guests coming in pretty regularly, and we have engaged wineries to host tastings, and also had performances in the lobby during the day. And we're working with the Livermore Wine Trolley to use the visitor center as a ticketing option for their service. And that is going to be inaugurated the weekend of May 13th to the 15th, when we have the first annual Livermore Valley Film Festival. Over the summer, we had a soft opening and began opening seven days a week in October. Every other month, there's a new art exhibit in the lobby, and we get guests coming to see that, and we have an opening in association with every art show that goes up. But we're also, in alternating months, going to have wine tastings and performances in the lobby. The first one we had was in February, and we had over 100 guests who came to taste wine from Livermore Valley, and it was a great success. So we have six curated art exhibitions each year that are curated by Ann Giancola from the Bothwell Art Center. The visitor center and gallery are open to the daily, open public to the daily, no, open daily to the public from noon to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. 11,000 people attended Art Walk, and we are creating Art on the Green in conjunction with Evenings on the Green this summer. We also talked about the solar project, which is, whoops, which is moving forward. It's an innovative plan to save expenses and be more green. Part of the plan is to have a battery in conjunction with the solar panels on the roof. Sun Edison is paying for the, or donating the panels for the roof and paying for all the installation, and we had a donor who donated the money to pay for the battery. So it's not costing us anything and will save us money, which is terrific. And we're going through the permitting process at this time, and we should be completed sometime this spring. Our resident arts partners are the cornerstone of what we do, is one of the main reasons for our existence. We have 10 performing arts partners, resident arts partners. Nine of them are performing groups, and I'm happy to say that next year, all nine of them will be performing on the Bankhead stage, which has been not happened every year, which is very terrific. We've started an education outreach program. We've talked to our resident arts partners and have taken the lead in providing access to educational opportunities for students in Livermore. This year, we focused on Title I schools in Livermore Junction, Joe Mitchell, and Maryland Avenue. We have helped fund projects by Chez Nami, the Hispanic Heritage Center, and fully funded three performances of Peter and the Wolf, performed by members of the Livermore Amador Symphony and narrated by our own mayor, which was terrifically well-received. We also had a free family concert early in December with Livermore Amador Symphony of Peter and the Wolf and a few other selected pieces, which was terrific and well-attended. And afterwards, we had a wonderful petting zoo in the lobby for kids to interact with the musicians and the instruments that they were playing. We feel very strongly about our responsibility to bring arts to the schools. All arts organizations must work together to create citizens who appreciate all that life has to offer. It is essential for our survival to nurture an appreciation for the arts, so we will have audiences who are interested and attentive in the future. So last year, we had 10,800 students reached through our arts education programs. 1,147 student tickets issued, were issued, and we underwrote those costs to the amount of $34,410. We had 30 master classes, concerts, or assemblies in schools, 16 school field trips and family performances held at Bankhead, and 15 arts organizations in Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center Creative Citizens Collaborative. So last September, oh, this is all the education stuff. Last September, we held some listening sessions. We wanted to find out what the impression of, what the impression of people were of the Bankhead and Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center, and also find out how people were hearing about the performances at the Bankhead. So we asked, why do people come to the Bankhead? Name recognition of the headliner of the group was number one, perceived value of the quality of the performance, quality of the venue, date or day of the week, ticket price, reviews or recommendation word of mouth, supporting the local theater, parking, and downtown Livermore location. Number eight was parking, and I find it strange because I keep on getting complaints from people now about how hard it is to park downtown. So we all hear about parking, and I certainly hear a lot of it. We rely on our friends and members to spread the word about what we're doing and how terrific the performances are. The impressions that people had were a little more troubling to me. Some of them were sort of ill-founded, I thought. Number one was that we were old, white, and male. Most of our audiences are female, so that sort of doesn't make any sense at all, but that's the impression that people get and what we have to fight against. We're not current, we're too formal, we're elitist, not welcoming to outsiders, and what's the Bothwell? So we have some challenges, challenges not so much of what we're doing, but telling the story of what we're doing, and that's, of course, one of the reasons I'm here.
Maybe because it was me standing on the stage in a tux. So that covers elitist, old, white, and male. Male, not current. And formal.
And too formal.
Okay, so I got four of the six.
And I'm guilty, too. I'm old, white, and male.
Were you not welcoming?
Well, I was very welcome. That's why that's down to five.
I have to say that I dealt with these issues when I was in Washington DC at the Atlas Performing Arts Center. One of the most successful strategies that we were able, we used, and we're already doing that, and one of the keys was the visitor center. Getting people in through the front doors the first time was key. And I have to tell you that the people who are coming into the visitor center are not our usual audience members. And many of them are saying, "Well, you know, I do feel comfortable here. I do feel welcome." And hopefully, they will be coming back. The visitor center is the first step. We also had the first free family concert hosted, again, by the Livermore Amador Symphony and Cantibella Children's Chorus, followed by the instrument petting zoo. We will continue to welcome all members of the community and to book artists that bring a more diverse audience. We will continue to welcome our current audience and hope that they will join us when we have performances that are a little more outside the norm. So last year, 17 countries were represented by performances at the Bankhead Theater. 70,500 people attended performances at the Bankhead Theater and the Bothwell Art Center last year. So what's ahead? We have the Livermore Valley Film Festival, which I talked about, and I've taken the liberty, you may know, I've taken the liberty of, I hope this works, of sharing a little video that we put together.
It's an old white dude. Ouch! Why don't you watch where you're going?
Why don't you watch where you're going? Oh, my art! There's science all over it!
Again, you mean, you got art in my science?
What are you talking about? Can't you see all the science is all over the art?
My science is clearly ruined. There's, you got art in it.
You'll be hearing from my lawyer.
Well, I never.
Now, hold on, everybody. Calm down. Look, it's not ruined. Matter of fact, it looks really nice.
Now, that's true art.
A scientific breakthrough.
Hey, let's go to the theater.
Sounds like a plane.
And I haven't seen it yet, but it is supposedly playing at The Vine.
It is.
It is. You've seen it. Good. Excellent. So, and Futures Films put that little video clip together, and they're doing two more ads for us, which we're looking forward to filming. The day when you filmed that, I mean, well, everybody was out. Everybody was out watching to see what was going on. It was a lot of fun. So Livermore Valley Film Festival is May 13th to the 15th. The Red Carpet opening is Friday, May 13th. The award ceremony is Sunday, May 15th. The weekend before, we're also doing a film crush competition, so if you've got some friends who want to make a film, get some information on that. It's May 6th to the 8th. You show up, you get five items and genre, and you have 24, well, no, 48 hours to make a film, so have at it. One of the other things that we did this past year is we redesigned our programs. I love them. I hope other people do. And this year, we've started printing these in-house so that we have a lot more flexibility with what we're doing. We can change things and make them more, make our marketing more flexible. So other things that we have ahead is, from the listening sessions, we want to diversify our demographics, reduce our age by an average of 10 years, add programming to attract more people of color, expand our audience base beyond Livermore and Pleasanton. We're also trying to engage a higher level of artists. One of the things that we did this year is we had Pink Martini. We did virtually no marketing for them, aside from putting them in our season brochure. The show sold out. We'd like to have three or four of those every year without having to market too much and spend too much money on marketing. We are, we're gonna produce 10 performances for Evenings on the Green this summer and add monthly Art on the Green in conjunction with the performances, continue to expand free concert series at the Bankhead, begin search for space to move the downtown art studios. I mentioned those 14 people that we house, which will go away once the construction for the downtown project starts. Establish both capital and operating reserves, and increase our funding from foundation grants and corporate sponsorships, and then increase earned income from rentals, rentals of lobby as well as the theater space. So we will continue to expand our concerts at the Bankhead. We are taking over the presentation of performances on the green in front of the Bankhead for the summer and for the next two years. Our mission is to find a home for the artists that have space at downtown art studios. We also are doing a lot, I mean, Chris Carter, who's our development director, is doing a terrific job. He started a month before I did, and I give him most of the credit for being in the black. He did a lot of work. We all work together. This year, if you want to drive a Tesla, if you want to own a Tesla, we're having a drawing, so get your tickets. And that will be, the winner will be announced at the season opening party, which is May 25th. We have a couple of performances that I will mention. Next year is our 10th season, so it's sort of a big deal for us. We're really excited. Our gala, we will be hosting Judy Collins in concert at the Bankhead, moving the gala back to the Bankhead. We also have a lot of old favorites, Arlo Guthrie, and some new things which you'll have to come to the opening to hear about. At a gathering recently, I had a patron of ours come up to me and say, "You know, every day, when I go to the Bankhead, you get up on the front of, on the stage, and you say, you know, tickets and earned income only cover about 60% of our income. We have to raise the other 40%." So when do you get to the point where you don't have to ask for that 40%? It's a common misconception. That's never gonna happen. I will tell you, the person who asked me this had an accent, had a European accent, because they come from a world where the government does pay for their ballet companies, for all of their arts. They fund a lot of this going, a lot of what we do as a nonprofit, and what most nonprofits in the US do. And we are actually having to raise only 40%, doing pretty well. The 50% is about the average for arts organizations. Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center is an unusual organization. Most theaters of our size, particularly in California, are associated with either municipality or with a university. So being an independent performing arts center is, has its good points and its bad points. The good is that we are really only beholden to our community. So we do, and I hope that we do, a good job supporting the work that they want to do and the work that our audiences want to see on the stage at the Bankhead and at the Bothwell. The bad point, of course, is that we have to raise a lot of money to do that. We hope that people will continue to support us and continue to love us. As I say from the stage each night, we have a performance, thanks for buying a ticket, it really helps, but remember, it takes more than just showing up to keep our beacon burning bright. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your support.
Any questions? Yes.
I think you guys are gonna like these comments. I gotta tell you, I've always loved the Bankhead, I've always been a patron of the Bankhead. This last year has been astounding. I was very excited when we first met a year and change ago, and the performance, the performances have always been good. This last year, I've been to so many that were excellent. I'd been to a few excellent ones before, but just the quality, even the resident companies, Tri-Valley reps, they put up their game. Everyone's just elevating their game. The symphonies, I mean, everything has just been fantastic. And just thank you. I really like the approach when, I think I saw you two weeks ago Thursday for the movie?
Yeah.
And when you come in first and ask people, "Who's first time here?" And I think about 10% of so people raised their hands that night, and you're like, "Welcome. We hope you enjoy your time here with us, and we hope you come back." I think that that's gonna make a big push towards people that are uncomfortable coming. And I just really, I do love the new program. I love the pick and choose, that you don't have to stay on one track, that I can be a season ticket holder from multiple things. I think that was a great move and a great piece. I love what you've done with the lobby thus far. I just, for all of you guys that have been involved in this project, in this, you know, over the last, and the vision that started probably, I guess, 20, 25 years ago, this is just a jewel of our town, and thank you for ensuring its financial success. I know it's not been easy, and we've been kind of hardline with saying, "Give us our money back."
With interest.
With interest. Thank you. But it shows that the community can rally around the arts and that the arts really truly are important for Livermore, and they are why so many people choose to live here. That's why I love living here. And just for you and everybody here that's had a piece of this, just thank you. It's just, I'll see you every Tuesday. I'm assuming they're gonna be on Tuesday nights, the music on the green?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll see you every Tuesday this summer. And just more of the same. Great job. Les Mis, oh, phenomenal, everything, I can't even.
Well, Tri-Valley rep is doing so well because they cast me this year.
Well, there is, well, and as I told you, you're not allowed to steal the show.
I couldn't help it.
But yeah, that was a really good performance, so yeah, absolutely.
Councilor Spodovski?
Ditto. Plain and simple. I want to thank all of the volunteers, the donors, LV PAC for the excellent job. I believe this time last year, we, or at least I mentioned that you're setting the bar very.
bar very high, I think you've exceeded it, you've smashed whatever theoretical hypothetical bar was set at that time and really congratulations on all of the hard work and the success, in particular, the educational outreach. That free concert, I heard, I can't tell you how many people came up to me and said that was the first time they'd been to the Bankhead, they absolutely loved it, it was wonderful, the outreach to the schools, the number of tickets distributed, you know, theater and arts were a very big part of my later education and it's sad that that is now disappearing from schools and we need organizations like yours to help us make up for that, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Say thank you again, and you really have helped the Bankhead realize its vision and let people understand that it's really a jewel. And I think, as you said, you have more to go, but I think you've really demonstrated now in this past year what we can do with the community's support. And I want to say is that I'm very, I mean, I'm a supporter and donor to the thing and that I want to see it continue and that personally, I think your ideas for how to continue improving the lobby are really good, so keep at it.
Step by step.
Vice Mayor?
Well, even though the Warriors game is ticking down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Won't get home to see the finish. No, in all sincerity, Scott, thank you. I think you've been a marvelous spark plug. We certainly all, as a council and community, saw some rotating executive directors during the cold winter years and to see the vibrancy and the enthusiasm and the growth is certainly a credit to you two and your team in place now and not to mention paying us back. So just one request, if you're going to be up on the roof messing with solar, you know, I'm the fireworks guy, if you could find us room for some bigger mortars from the roof of the Bankhead, think what the Bankhead would look like with a couple of big fireworks birds coming right off your roof.
We'll have to talk to them.
Well, I think I'll just run the table here. Again, it's marvelous, the enthusiasm and the passion that you have brought and that you've been able to really ignite has been very exciting and again, longtime supporter of the Bankhead. The one that struck me is you said, engage higher level artists. You've got Ottmar Liebert, the number one selling flamenco guitarist of all time, you've got George Winston, truly the top of his game, Capitol Steps, Jake Shumavukuru, the top exponent in the world, and how can you possibly get better than the last modern major general? I mean, truly, phenomenal. The caliber of, I used to have to go to the city, San Francisco, to see the people that I'm now seeing at the Bankhead. Judy Collins, I mean, I just, I followed her for years and always having to go over to the San Francisco venues to see these top level artists that we are now getting in Livermore and you just do a tremendous job.
Well, I think it's a bad, I mean, I say, I mean, you said that it's not, we have to have a variety, I mean, there has to be a full range of, you know, from the Pink Martini where we spent a lot of money for them to come in, but we also made a lot of money, so we're, you know, we're going to do a couple of those and a couple of, you know, the big name, then people that come regularly, Arlo Guthrie, Ottmar Liebert, you know, all these people that people in Livermore have come to love seeing, but also challenge them to do things that are outside the box.
Very good, well, good, keep up the great work, obviously, everybody up here loves it and I see a lot of people behind you love it as well, so, great, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead and clap, yeah. We're not going to intimidate him. Okay, thank you very much, now moving on to matters initiated, we've got a memorandum regarding AB 1107, I think everybody has had a chance to look over that, did you want to make any comments on that?
No, I just want to bring it to your, thank you for bringing it to the public's attention, yes, there was a matters initiated asking for some background in AB 1107, that's a regional transportation sales tax, so that is in your supplemental packet today. So I'm going to have to present that to you, it's prepared by myself and the Ministry of Services Director Douglas Alessio.
Okay, terrific.
The only other item I have to report on is, there was a matters initiated last weekend for me to reach out to the Brown Act Committee of the City Attorneys Division of the League of California Cities for a second opinion, I have done that. I talked to the Chair, Mr. Michael Jenkins, he did share with me that that was not the primary purpose of the Brown Act Committee, their purpose was to educate attorneys on developments of the Brown Act and to update the league's publications. That being said, I did talk to him to see whether it's something he could pursue in his private capacity, he's available to do that, we didn't receive direction on that in the past, I'm comfortable doing that under my budget, but just wanted to bring it to your attention to see if you have any desire to pursue that or go another direction.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Switkowski?
Only two items to report, March 5th, I attended the dedication of a new solar array at the Hindu Community and Cultural Center, I believe that's, will provide 90%? Or was it 90?
90.
90% of their energy needs, so that's, that's a huge, huge project and a great accomplishment for the Cultural Center. And then, March 7th, at the Lab to Board meeting, we approved the draft route realignment and changes, so watch for a public hearing in early May. The routes will be changing in town, some of the highlights will include, the Rapid will now be every 15 minutes from the morning to the PM peak, so it will be essentially meeting the BART trains every 15 minutes, starting at the lab, going through downtown, propose to go past Los Pacitas and then down 580 directly to the, to the BART station. In the evenings, it will be every 30 minutes until 9:00 and then after that, it will be hourly until midnight, so that's one of the most frequent routes in the Lab to system will be cutting right through town and providing some, some great transit service. Also, there is a, another proposal, a new route called the 580X, which will leave the Transit Center every half hour during the AM and PM peak period and it will go from the Transit Center directly to BART and back. So that's a very direct and quick service to the BART station from downtown Livermore. So again, we're in the process of setting a public hearing date, it will probably be at the Bankhead because we're anticipating a sizable crowd and that will be in early May. And that's all I have to report.
All right. Councilman Turner?
Well, I was just going to announce that that was going to be at the Bankhead. You got me. However, it's one of the only public hearings that you can go to and get a glass of wine and take it in with you. Thank you, Scott Kennison. But yeah, and people, the neat thing about the Rapid is that, since we're all talking about the Bankhead, is we will be able to go see a show and take the Rapid back to BART, so that'll certainly help with bringing people out of the area because they will have transportation back to BART, depending on the timing, otherwise they can take an Uber back, but that, I think that's really cool. My only meeting to report was the Lab to Finance meeting on the 23rd and finances are all in really good order and that's really all I have to report.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Warner?
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Garry?
Just one thing, several of us attended the annual Livermore City Employees Award Recognition Luncheon last week, I just wanted to say on camera, on behalf of all of us, there are not due to work schedules. Fabulous event, it's always nice to see the tenured city employees, the city is a family, we have a tremendously hardworking, multitasking staff who accomplishes a heck of a lot and you don't read about them in the newspaper, which is a good thing because we honestly don't have the issues that some agencies around the nation have, and steady and quiet means competent, professional, and get it done, and that's the staff, so thanks to all of you.
And how many years of service?
1,060.
1,060 years of service honored that day, that was.
68 employees, but we also, as we recognized the other, you know, all 452 employees that do a remarkable job here, what makes this city as great as it is. So yes, there were 68 employees that were recognized, but we wanted to point out the great job that all 452 do, and as I pointed out there, in that case, it takes a lot of people to make us look good and they really do a great job of it, so thanks to all of them. Pardon me? I'm not done yet, I'm not done yet.
Before you go in, you're.
Okay, go for it.
Sorry, I just wanted, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to segue, there's one event every year that I never miss and I pin it into my council, in my calendar and make sure I don't miss it, and it is that event and I am so sorry I missed it, you'll be happy that I kept my germs at home, but again, I just wanted to thank you, our city staff is just amazing, every day doing more with less, and I just formally wanted to thank you all and I'm telling you, I'm sorry to make it and I'll make sure next year and hopefully I don't get the same cold again next year. And, but anyway, thank you for giving me that time.
Okay, I was also at the March 5th Hindu Temple Solar Project, that was very impressive, two large arrays, the Employee Service Awards, and March 10th, I did a presentation to the Santa Clara County Cities Association, talking about BART to Livermore and BART to ACE. It was very well received because I underscored the point that we were trying to connect the job centers in Silicon Valley with the affordable housing, which is in the San Joaquin County, and they understood the importance of making that connection. I also offered that one of the reasons that Gillig Bus is moving to Livermore is because their employees could not get to work, and I offered that if anybody of them knew a company that had the same problem, they could be more than welcome to move into Livermore as well. For some reason, there weren't a lot of takers, but, but no, it was very well received and they understood the importance of connecting the mega region and that's what BART to ACE is going to be all about. Today, I was at the Alameda County Transportation Commission, we had the I-580 Express Lanes Committee, and as you've all probably noticed, the express lanes are up and running and they're doing very well, and we've seen some great shots where there's gridlocked traffic and these cars are just flying down the express lane. And if you are one of the people on the slow side, you can get the flex passes from Safeway, Walgreens, or Costco, or you can go online to Fast Track, pick them up there, they will mail them to you free of charge. So it was actually the day before we did the ribbon cutting that I got into the express lanes and I had a meeting here at City Hall and actually was recognizing Dave Rocher's service to the community and I got here in time, but only because I had those express lanes. The, we also extended our contract with the CHP for enforcement of those express lanes, we also had a legislative update, there is a new proposal, it's called AB 1572, which, it's a state proposal that is going to, it proposes to require school districts to provide free student transit, whether through a bus, BART, or whatever, with their existing funding. So I don't know where that's going to go, hopefully not very far because it's one of these things where if anybody's strapped for funds, you know, let's go back after the schools for more money. So this is one of the things that we're looking at to fund with ACTC and Measure BB is the, some of the free transit passes, we're implementing a pilot program right now and they're going through site selection, but that's going to be funded by Measure BB. So with that, that's all I've got, any other, Councilman Goody, the order, in that case, going to adjourn the meeting to the next regular meeting on March 28th. Thank you.